Yep. All right, we're going to bring this meeting back to order.
Okay, welcome to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners Meeting. This is a public meeting that is being aired live on our local cable television station, QACTV seven. These media broadcasts provide county citizens an opportunity to watch and review our scheduled public meetings. In addition to our live audience this evening, we are providing remote options for citizens to watch and participate in county commissioner meetings. Citizens may watch our meeting live on our website at QAC.org/live or on our television channel, Breeze Line Channel seven and High Definition Channel 507. Citizens may also participate by joining the live Zoom meeting by going to QAC.org-publiccomment. Citizens may also email comments to publiccomment@QAC.org. Comments received will be reviewed during the press and public comment period on this evening's agenda. We acknowledge your participation and by attending, you acknowledge that this session is both recorded and aired. Press and public comment will be taken and is limited to three minutes per person. If you do care to speak, please sign the information sheet on the table out in the lobby. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing for the commissioners' review. We will now stand and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commission President Jim Moran.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you can remain standing for a moment of silence for the loss of Dave Olds, the county commissioner? Thank you very much.
All right, commissioners, our agenda for today's meeting, January 24th, along with the regular enclosed session minutes from your January 10th meeting, they've all been circulated for review. Do we have any additions and/or corrections?
It's a motion to include four additional desktop items to today's agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the agenda as amended and the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Okay, we just held a closed session under the general provisions article, section 3305B1, to discuss boards and commissions, and I believe we have an appointment to make.
Yep. I move to reappoint Nicole Chase Powell, Jenny Crosley, and Joan Taylor to the Council for Children in Youth. These terms will begin on January 1st of 2023 and expire on December 31st of 2025.
Second. We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you, commissioners. That brings us to our first press and public comment section. So thanks for taking the time to express your views to the county commissioners. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Comments longer than three minutes may be submitted in writing. This commission respects your desire and right to convey your message freely. When you come forward, please speak clearly at the standing microphone, state your name, address, and topic of interest, and in keeping with the dignity of our office, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner.
Okay, Marjorie's getting a list. If you're here to testify about the hearing for the armor storage, if you could wait till the hearing, which will be right after press and public comment, if not?
Don't sign up.
Don't sign up. So would anybody like to speak on any other subject besides armor storage? Seeing none, we'll close press and public comment.
All right, thank you, commissioners. So we have our first public hearing is for Public Facilities Bond Authorization Ordinance 2301, and that's scheduled for 5:40. So we're a little ahead of schedule. Would you like to cover some action items?
Yep.
All right. If you want to turn to tab number three, action item one, on page one, is Proclamation 23-02, Human Trafficking Prevention Month.
Commissioner Wilson, thank you.
Proclamation 2302, whereas human trafficking is a serious problem on the eastern shore, where traffickers use violence, threats, deception, and other manipulative tactics to force and coerce young and adult individuals to engage in commercial sex acts or to provide labor or services against their will. And whereas between June 2013 and May 2020, there were reports of child sex trafficking in every eastern shore county, and since 2017 throughout Maryland, 127 human trafficking victims have been rescued. And whereas human trafficking is the second highest criminal enterprise in the United States grossing $9.5 billion every year, the increased use of drugs, focus on social media, changes brought by COVID-19 have increased the level of human trafficking. The Eastern Shore Human Trafficking Task Force has engaged in anti-human trafficking actions by encouraging and promoting awareness and prevention of human trafficking. And whereas January across the nation is Human Trafficking Prevention Month, which formally recognizes that human trafficking consistently occurs in the United States, and emphasizes the need for the public and private sectors to come together to focus on prevention, prosecution, partnerships, and support for survivors. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Queen Anne's County, Maryland hereby recognize January as Human Trafficking Prevention Month.
Thank you.
We have a proclamation that we signed, and we'll be sending out to them.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Moving along, also tab three, item two, on page two, is Proclamation 2303 for National Mentoring Month.
Proclamation 2303, whereas January 2023 will mark the 21st anniversary of the National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to focus the attention on the need for mentors. Whereas Queen Anne's County honors volunteer mentors who support young people by showing up for them every day and demonstrating their commitment to helping them thrive. And whereas mentoring has proven to be an effective strategy to increase the life opportunities of all young people. And whereas quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships, communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and growth of young persons and their relationships with others. And whereas with support of the county, state, business community, leaders, the Maryland Mentor has helped establish mentorships with youth across the county and state, providing young people with opportunities to succeed. And now therefore, we, the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County, do hereby support the nation in proclaiming January 2023 as National Mentoring Month in Queen Anne's County and recognizes the acknowledgement and the importance of mentoring programs. Signed by your county commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Item number three, on pages three through five, is a request from the Kent Island High School Band Boosters, requesting funds to be reimbursed to them in the amount of $1,082.65 due to the renovation of the high school track, which prevented them from having their event in the stadium.
I move to approve reimbursement to Kent Island High School Band Boosters in the amount of $1,082.65.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to, I just, it's an unfortunate situation, but there were other sports teams that were affected by the brand-new track going in at the high school. The event did take place. It was just taking, it took place at another area on the campus. I just, I'm not comfortable with doing this. I think it opens up a can of worms. There were soccer teams, soccer games, and home football games that had to be moved because of this. I personally believe that the commissioners funded the project, and it was definitely needed, but the timeframe and when it was going to take place and how it was going to go off wasn't controlled by the commissioners. It was controlled by the Board of Ed.
So I'd like to, so you're saying there was others affected, but we're not seeing those right now?
Yep.
So then I'm going to table my motion, and I would like to see any others that were maybe affected, have them bring forward what, how they feel they were affected by it. Huh?
Reach out to school.
Yes, and find out before. So, said. Amenable everybody to table it?
Yeah.
You're going to just withdraw the motion for now? I'll withdraw for now, again. Okay, and we'll table it and?
I don't want to, I agree with Phil, we don't need 10 of them coming in over the next month because of this and see what the actual damage was.
Okay. Very good.
All right, thank you, commissioners.
You want to stop there, Todd, and we'll go.
Okay, all right. It is 5:40, so we have Mr. Jeff Thompson here. He is going to officiate the hearings this evening. Our first hearing is for County Ordinance 2301, and this is for the Public Facilities Bond Authorization of 2023.
All right, we've got a public hearing in County Commissioner Queen Anne's County. We'll close hearing on January 24th, 2023 at 5:40. To the County Commissioner Gabe Root, Liberty Building 107, North Liberty Streets, Centerville, Maryland 21617. The public comments regarding the County Ordinance 23-01, a public call to authorize and empower Queen Anne's County, from time to time, to borrow not more than $7 million for the public purpose of financing or refinancing certain public facilities, all as more quickly described in the proposed ordinance. After evidence of following by the issuance and sale of public rights, a full payment credit of one more series of the federal public laws in a light form amount empowering and directing the county to adopt a resolution, page 23-504D, as the local government article of the county code of Maryland, 2018, replaced by in 2020 supplement, prior to issuing all or any part of bonds empowering and directing the county to let ad verum taxes at a rate and an amount sufficient to provide funds for the payment of the return principal of an interest on bonds and pledging the county's full payment credit and unlimited taxing power to the payment thereof, exempting the bonds from, sorry, I'm sorry, exempting the bonds from provisions of section 20205 to 19206, inclusive of the code authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds and relating generally to the issuance and sales of bonds. All persons who wish to comment on the proposed ordinance may do so. A hearing speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Written testimony of any length may be submitted on or before the hearing date to the county commissioners at 107 North Liberty Streets, Centerville, Maryland 21617. Copies of the proposed ordinance may be obtained in its entirety at the county commissioners' office, 107 North Liberty Streets, Centerville, Maryland 21617, prior to the hearing, bringing hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. All hearing sites are accessible to individuals with disabilities. Sign language interpreters and assisted listening devices will be available for individuals with disabilities. If any such assistance is necessary, please contact Mrs. Beverly Churchill at 410-758-4406 or TDD 410-758-2126 at least seven days before the scheduled hearing. This was issued by authority of the county commissioners for Queen Anne's County. We've got certificate of publication showing that it was published both from the Bay Times and the Record Observer on 1/13/23 and 1/20/23, and that's if the publication will become part of the record. Thank you.
And this is, Josh, you wanted yours for the next hearing, not this hearing, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we have nobody that's signed up. Would anybody like to speak in relation to County Bill Number 23-01? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the comment. Public Facilities Bond Authorization of 2023. That being said, we'll close that. And does anybody want to vote now on this, or you want to wait two weeks for this one? Because it's pretty much cut and dry.
Ready to vote now.
We can vote on it.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Pass Ordinance 2301.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, the, that takes care of this.
All right.
Sorry about that.
All right.
I got a hammer.
All right, commissioners, our next hearing for the armored storage on Kent Island is scheduled for 5:50, so we have a few more minutes.
We'll head right back to those.
We'll go back to tab number three, action items, tab three, action item number four on page six. This is for the Local Parks and Playground Infrastructure Grant. This is a vendor approval list. Commissioners, I previously approved a series of projects using the $1 million grant from DNR for park improvements, and that would include the renovation of the courts at Round Top Park for pickleball courts and one basketball court, replacement of the basketball court lights at Pinckney Park, color coat the basketball court at Pinckney Park, and construction of a skate park at Cocky Lane in Stevensville. And we have a listing of vendors here on various state contracts and national contracts for the Courtwork, ATC Corporation, for the court lights, Musco Lighting, or the skate park, American Ramp Company.
I move to authorize Department of Parks and Rec to use ATC Corp., Musco Lighting, and American Ramp Company to complete their projects for FY23 DNR-LPPI grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'd say that, you know, we, this set of commissioners and the last set of commissioners were totally in support of upgrading all of our parks and our crosswalks, and this is just another step in spending another million dollars to get all the, what our county administrator said, repaired, and a new skateboard park. So we're looking forward to all those. Any other discussion?
Mr. Director, at Pinckney Park, is there a chance to put timers on the lights?
There is, there will be a timer where you'll be able to activate it from, let's say, like now, you do it from 5 until 10 p.m. Turn it on or it'll last an hour. It'll run for an hour, it'll go off, and then you turn the dial again, it'll come back on. So that way, it's not constantly on. You'll be able to monitor.
Are all lights that are going for recreation here, so they're going to start having all of the timers on?
Yes. We've done that for our pickleball courts, our basketball courts, and our tennis courts, and any other future court lighting will do that as well.
Good job. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we're voting on to authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to use above vendors, ATC Corp., Musco Lighting, and American Ramp Company to complete their projects for the FY23 DNR-LPPI grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you, commissioners. Item five, on pages seven through 25, is the Bloomfield Maryland Heritage Area Authority Grant. Parks and Rec received a grant for $17,500 for work to do a study at Bloomfield Farmhouse at White Marsh Park to do a historic evaluation structurally of that building. This includes a $17,500 match from the county.
I move that Commission President Jim Moran execute the Maryland Heritage Area Authority Fund Grant for Bloomfield Farmhouse at White Marsh Park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Item six, on pages 26 and 28, is the Parks and Recreation Capital Equipment Purchase, and this is in 2021. Parks was approved to purchase two Chevrolet Silverado 2500s at $36,464 each. Obviously, we know we've had supply chain issues. One of them has not come in, and they're not, they're no longer making those models. So they did find a 2023 model at a rate of $49,575, a difference of $13,111, and we're seeking approval to add that additional budget to the equipment acquisition.
So we're looking at, oh, sorry, go ahead. I move to authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to continue with the purchase from Herdrick Fleet Service, Inc. from Milford, Delaware, at the increased cost of $49,575, funding to come from the Department of Parks and Recreation's capital equipment budget.
Did we get a second?
No.
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So, so because of the supply chain issues, we're going to pay $100,000 for these two trucks as opposed to?
Well, we're only purchasing one because of, we can't get the second.
Okay, so it's only one we're getting?
We're only getting one.
Oh, okay.
We initially wanted two. We had finance, or we had money for that, but because of the delay, the prices went up. You know, we're asking for the additional $13,000 that would cover the cost of at least one.
So this is a Chevy Silverado 2500 with an extended cab. What do we use that for? Just moving personnel around?
Personnel for plowing snow, moving material.
Cool. Thank you.
If you got a Tundra, it lasts 300,000 miles.
We'll keep that one in mind.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners, and we have one other item for Parks, if we can cover that now while Mr. Chanley is here. It's desk item number two, a Ford Transit Connect Van Acquisition, in the same vein as our last action item. Parks was approved to purchase two 2021 Transit Vans for $44,670. We have not received either of those vans. They don't have a build date for those. They were very hard to get. We have found out about one replacement vehicle, a 2022 Ram Promaster City Wagon, that is available for $35,604 at a local dealer, and we are requesting approval to cancel the current contract for the Transit Connects and purchase this one unit for this acquisition.
I move to authorize Department of Parks and Recreation to cancel the current contract with Apple Ford of Columbia for $44,670 for two Transit Connect Vans, and move forward with the purchase of one 2022 Ram Promaster City Wagon from Preston CDJR of Millsboro, Delaware for $35,604.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item?
I have a question. Again, what are we going to use, this?
The Transit Vans?
Yes.
That would be for, we're only purchasing one. Initially, we're going to get two, so I'm helping you out. It will be used for our custodial crew.
Sure, okay. Could we do, I know this is kind of a unique because we didn't get what we wanted, and so we have to go an alternate direction, but in the future, when you have requests, if you could just put in the reading here exactly what we're going to be using it for, and then that way I don't have to tie things up a little bit.
And I guess the other thing, looking at this, I mean, that's almost over 20% increases. Are we looking at that coming into this year's budget in terms of what we're going to be looking at for increases in capital equipment with the systemic stuff?
We have adjusted, you know, those new numbers, what we think they're going to be, and kind of based off of this, so, you know, that will reduce our total request as far as what we're asking for.
And you feel comfortable with the numbers you're coming in with, based on availability?
That's, that's the key. I mean, we can go ahead and put in the order, but we don't know if it's going to, you know, be backlogged again or not. This one, I mean, this was back to, you know, September of '21.
Right. No, I, this is, I know this is like the third or fourth one to come in, but that's a reality that I think we're going to have to deal with here moving forward for some time.
True.
Or get older models.
Well, and just also for informational purposes, you know, as we're getting these new vehicles, we're turning in, for this one, I think we're turning in a 2001 Chevy Blazer and also a 1996 Sierra 1500. So, you know, we're squeezing every bit of life out of the vehicles that we get.
Meaning you're selling those back to the dealer, or just selling them on the open market?
We're selling on Gov. deals.
Good job. Any other discussion?
Those vehicles are, well, five for historic tanks.
That's right.
That's right. So do our taxpayers. There you go.
All right, so what we're voting on is authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to cancel the current contract with Apple Ford of Columbia, Maryland for $44,670 for two Transit Connect Vans, and we are moving to authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to purchase one 2022 Ram Promaster City Wagon from Preston CDJR of Millsboro, Delaware for $35,604. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Chanley. Okay, commissioners, it is 5:54, so we can now commence with the hearing for the growth allocation petition for armored storage on Kent Island. Mr. Thompson, again, is going to officiate the hearing, and we have our planning staff, Stephanie, that will begin the presentation on the project, and will receive public comment. And Director Moore, not here as well.
I would just ask as a reminder that if you come up to comment, that you give us your name, your address, okay?
All right.
We're going to start by reading a public notice that appeared in both the Bay Times and the Record Observer on January the 6th, January the 13th, and January the 20th of this year, and the certificate of publication will be made a part of the record. Notice of public hearing, the Queen Anne's County Commissioners hereby gives notice pursuant to code, the public legal laws of Queen Anne's County, Chapter 14.1, Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Act 14.177D, that it will hold a public hearing concerning a growth allocation petition to reclassify 2.811 acres of land from limited development area, which is LDA, to intense development area, IDA, for a proposed 156,000-square-foot, four-story self-storage facility with interior access only and associated parking. The request includes existing parcels 351, 352, and 287, located on Tax Map 57 on Piney Creek Road and Nash Court. The application was submitted by petitioner Nashville Properties LLC and by the agent Joseph A. Stevens of Stevens Palmer LLC. The petitioner's proposal was made under the procedures of Chapter 14.1, Article 15 of the Queen Anne's County Code. The petition shall be considered by the county commissioners, and the hearing will be held on January 24th, 2023, at 5:50 at the county commissioners' meeting room, Liberty Building 107 North Liberty Streets, Centerville, Maryland 21617. The petition, as well as the development site plan for the subject property and other relevant materials, are available for view at the Department of Planning and Zoning 110 Vincent Street, Suite 104, Centerville, Maryland 21617, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m., or contact the office at 410-758-1255 for more information. All hearing sites are accessible to individuals with disabilities. Sign language interpreters and assisted listening systems will be available for individuals with disabilities. If any such assistance is necessary, please contact Mrs. Beverly Churchill at 410-758-4406 or TDD 410-758-2126 at least seven days before the scheduled hearing by authority of the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County. And as Commissioner Duminho pointed out, as you come up to testify, please state your name and address for the record so we can keep track of those who are testifying here tonight. Thank you.
Before you this evening, you have a growth allocation petition for armored storage. So the first thing I want to go over is just the process and how we've got to this point in the process. So the planning commission, the county commissioners, and the critical area commissioner are all charged with making decisions on this application. The first step is for the applicant to submit a concept plan, and for the planning commission to review that concept plan. For this application, that was done on July 14th, 2022, and the planning commission also indicated that there were technical comments for this application, and we'll kind of go through that as we go through the rest of the presentation. But the next step is to file a growth allocation petition, which was completed on September 19th, and then the county commissioners are to refer that application to the planning commission for, to review the growth allocation petition. That was done on October 11th, and the planning commission held their public hearing on November 10th, and as well after that, that recommendation was forwarded to the county commissioners on December 13th. So at this point in time, the county commissioners are to hold a public hearing and then to conceptually approve or disapprove that proposed petition, and also to include conditions. And then items seven through nine, I'll go over at the end, just because that's the next steps moving forward. There we go. All right, so this is the concept plan that was approved on, there we go. Thank you. On July 14th, the applicant is requesting growth allocation for 2.8811 acres of land to be reclassified from limited development area to intense development area, and they're requesting approval from the county commissioners. All right, so this project is located in Chester. You'll see the red dot there in the, on the lower part of the screen. Okay, thank you. All right, so the zoning for this parcel is zoned town center, and also it's located within the growth area for Chester and Stevensville. All right, then in front of you, you'll see that in order for this application to go through the to go through, the applicant will be required to do an administrative subdivision, and this will be near the end of the process, but this is the proposal. The property owner will be basically merging parcels that are on the middle of the screen there, and then the parcel that's to the top northeast, that'll be conveyed to the county commissioners for, basically, for potential launch area, or also increase the trail that's there now. So that's what they'll be doing for the economic benefit to the county, which is a requirement for growth allocation. All right, and before you, this is basically the concept plan that the planning commission did approve in July. The 156,000-square-foot building is the area in pink. And then you'll see some parking, which is in the gray area, which would be to the west of the building. And also, there's proposed stormwater management to the east of the building, and also to the south of the parking area. There will be existing structures that will be removed for the building of this structure. And also, all the TC, which is standards, design standards, have been met. The green area is a deed-restricted area, in which, basically, they're deed restricting that area, so there can be no further development in that area, and there's no proposed development at this time. It's also map priority funding area, enterprise zone, and also S1 for sewer and W2 for water. So currently, there's no plans for the Shamrock Road overpass, which is there, but basically, the planning commission put a condition on this application that the property owner needs to work with DPW and State Highway in the future for when that will come through. At this point in time, there's no direct plans for that. And then, obviously, previously noted, a concept plan is required as part of a growth allocation petition. The planning commission obviously put their conditions on it. This is a site plan that goes before the county commissioners, which is not something that normally occurs. Usually, you do not see site plans. But with the fact that it's embedded in a growth allocation petition, this is where you have the opportunity to incorporate conditions on the actual concept plan itself. Okay, so the area, the black dotted area, that's what the property line will be after the administrative subdivision. The red hatched area is the 2.811 acres that is requesting growth allocation. The existing area that's in yellow, that's limited development area, and that's a total of 1.968 acres if growth allocation is approved. And then the remaining 4.247 acres of resource conservation area will not change with this application. So the planning commission put technical comments on this application when they reviewed it in July, and they were to the applicant to meet with the adjacent property owner. The applicant has done so, and then they needed to formulate a plan of hours and operation and security. They have done so and supplied that in their application and their petition. They're also to provide renderings of the structures amongst, basically, the surrounding properties, and they have done so, and I've included some of those images in this presentation, which I'll show you. And then they also were attempt, they made an attempt to mitigate the appearance of the structure within the surrounding area. During the concept site plan review by the planning commission, this building was proposed to be a red, shade of red. When they came back for their growth allocation review, it was changed to a green color, which I will show you on the next slide, and also included Bermuda shutters as an architectural feature. And then they're also to submit an anticipated TRIPS study, which they have done so as well. As for the environmental aspect of this property, there's no steep slopes, streams, endangered species, or habitat, or interior dwelling bird habitat included in this parcel. There is woodlands, non-title wetlands, non-title wetland buffers, and also the flood plain on this parcel. So there's 1.4 acres of woodlands to be cleared, and that's kind of the red dotted area, which is overlaid in green. There's .23 acres of non-title wetland buffer to be disturbed, and that's the yellow hatched area. There's no non-title wetlands to be disturbed for this project. And also, there's a flood plain area to be disturbed, and that's the red hatch, crosshatch area. At this point in time, that's .17 acres to be filled. There's been an authorization approved by MDE for the disturbance of the non-title wetlands buffer. I just want to point out that it's a requirement of growth allocation not to impact habitat protection areas. The non-title wetlands are habitat protection area, and there is no development proposed for that, but the non-title wetlands buffer is not considered a habitat protection area in which that's the area they've received their approval from MDE for disturbance.
Explain that again, because I think that's going to confuse everybody, including me.
Yeah. So the non-title wetlands has a required 25-foot buffer.
And the non-title wetlands is which one?
That would be the shaded darker green.
Okay.
And then the non-title wetlands buffer is the 25-foot setback off of that darker shaded green. And then they're disturbing .23 acres of that non-title wetlands buffer. In relation to the growth allocation, you're not to disturb a habitat protection area. According to COMAR, a habitat protection area is the non-title wetlands, but not the non-title wetlands buffer. If that makes sense.
Okay.
I know.
You're saying that the yellowish-orange is the buffer?
That they're disturbing, yes.
And you can disturb that buffer, but nothing on the other side of that buffer?
Yes, not the non-title wetlands, yeah.
Okay.
And so this is the renderings of the building that were submitted with the growth allocation petition. Obviously, on the top, that's the front image. That would be the east side of the building, and then the bottom is the rear, which would be the east side of the building. The front is the west side, sorry. And this is what they had proposed to mitigate, obviously, the architectural renderings, to change the color. And this is just the images from all the other sides of the building. The top left is Route 50 side, which would be the south side of the building. The image on the bottom left, that's from Mr. Hudson's side of the building. That's from the north side. The front, which would be the west side of the building, is on the top right. And then the lower part is the rear part of the building, which would be the east side of the building. Within their petition, the property owner submitted renderings, basically to show what the building would look like amongst the neighborhood itself. There are two renderings that were submitted from 50. One shows not very much vegetation in the front of the building, and the one on the next slide shows a lot more vegetation. So there is no, this is something you might want to contemplate, whether, you know, this look from 50 is something.
And that's the Cracker Barrel billboard, correct? That stood to the left, the blue one? So that's where all the boats are?
That's where all the boats are, right there?
Photoshop them out of there.
Yeah. I guess that would be promoting the brand.
Yeah, you'll see the difference between the two images. One has trees on the right-hand side, and the other does not, so. And then this is the view from Piney Creek, which is basically the north side of the building, where Mr. Hudson's property is. And that's the next couple of slides. So also, as well, when the applicant came in for the growth allocation through the planning commission, they submitted two options of renderings. Option one, well, go back to the original submittal. The original submittal only showed Bermuda shutters on the northwest side of the building, which would be towards Mr. Hudson and towards 50. This first option is showing windows in what would have been in place of Bermuda shutters, which are not windows. And the next option shows Bermuda shutters on the north side of the building, and then windows to the west. So there is a little difference. The planning commission did not make a decision on either of the options or the renderings, but just so you're aware, there were multiple submitted. All right, and now to the growth allocation requirements themselves. This is in the growth area. It is redevelopment, so it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. They have submitted an economic benefit to the county, as in donating the piece of property to the northeast. There is location and criteria for adjacency standards. It has to be within an existing limited development area, which it currently is. And if it's less than 20 acres, it has to be located in a growth area, which I've indicated it is as well. Served by public water and sewer, which it is, consistent with the goals and objectives of the comp plan. And on the right-hand side, you'll see there, goals and strategies from the comp plan that are consistent with this project and the overall economic benefit to the community, which they have submitted. They also are required to minimize impacts to habitat protection areas. We kind of went over that with the environmental slide. And also, they're to optimize benefits to water quality. They are currently required to meet stormwater requirements, but they're going above and beyond what they're required to do. And then it's to minimize their impacts to the defined land uses within the RCA, and that's the portion of the property on the east side, which is RCA, and there's no development proposed for that side of the parcel. It's okay. Planning commission recommendation, they made a favorable recommendation to the commissioners, listed there is the conditions that they put on this application, is to dedicate the resulting parcel 287 for passive recreation. Deed restrict the 5.987 acres of woodlands. Stormwater facilities shall be tested for effectiveness on regular basis. No disturbance to the non-title wetlands. And then a fence put in place on the north side of the building, which is adjacent to Mr. Hudson's property. And then they need to meet with DPW and SHA, moving forward with the Shamrock Road overpass. And then the next steps, obviously, the commissioners need to put a conceptual vote on this. I've listed there the things that you might want to look at. After this, you'll make a recommendation. It will go to the Critical Area Commission for their review and approval, and will hold, they will hold a public hearing. Once that is complete, it'll come back to the county commissioners to hold another public hearing for the actual map amendment. That's the point in time when the actual map designation will occur. There'll be a public hearing, and we will render a decision at that point in time. And then the final site plan will go back to the planning commission for approval, and they must at that time incorporate all the conditions that are placed on the application throughout the entire process. So now, that all aside, there is a rendering, a 3D kind of model that the GIS department put together. It kind of shows the building within the neighboring areas, so. Can't pronounce it.
Get some AC DC.
Hey Lou Rawls, can you get us a video?
For us, or are you going to give us a video?
No, my computer doesn't hear the music. Only one.
You know, I might have missed this, so sorry, I had to step out, but growth allocation, for some in the room and some on TV, what does that allow them to do? When someone gets growth allocation, what does that allow someone to do?
So it allows them to change the critical area designation on their property. There's three critical area designations, resource conservation area, limited development area, and intense development area. Resource conservation area is intended for larger tracts of land, usually agricultural, wetlands, woodlands areas. Limited development area is usually your subdivisions. Within those two, there is a 15% lot coverage limit. So basically, there's only a certain particular amount that you can develop on the parcel. And then intense development area, there is no restriction on lot coverage. Therefore, it usually then goes back to the county zoning requirement for any type of impervious surface requirement. But they are required to meet stormwater management requirements above and beyond what is required of RCA and LDA.
It's a lot coverage issue.
Yeah, for this project, they need the lot coverage, so that's why they're requesting the.
Impervious.
So without this growth allocation, what can they do with that lot as of right? Like, what would they, if there was another business or something else?
As of right now, they would have to meet the 15% lot coverage limit. The permitted uses, the use would still be the same. They could, but only increase, have a lot coverage of 15%, which is.
What square footage is that approximately? Yeah, I mean, what we're looking at here is what percent is of the.
The building is 156,000 square. I'd have to pull it out.
Now, we finally stumped her.
We did.
39,000 is the full quarter.
39,000, right. So what does that percentage was? I'm just curious, you know, 15% on a regular.
Say it's close to.
The overall, it's, the project area is roughly nine acres, and what we're showing right now is about 16.5% impervious cover.
Mr. Chaney, would you identify yourself for the record?
Kevin Sharon, DMS and Associates.
We won't ask him any more questions until he comes up here. Okay.
I would like to make, as a part of the record, the document that Steph was, Ms. Jones was testifying from, as well as the video, just as a part of the record. I guess, planning safety exhibit one, for the live description.
Anybody else have any more questions for Steph at this time?
So other than like a self-storage area, what types of businesses could be there right now as of right?
So this is zoned town center. So obviously, you could have your, any type of commercial uses. Obviously, also, at this point in time, your resident, the single-family dwellings that are there at this point in time are non-conforming, because single-family dwellings aren't permitted in the town center. Any other?
Mostly commercial.
These are commercial development. I think they're light, medium, and high commercial, as well as, I believe, low, light industrial.
So warehouse could go in there right now, smaller than what this is, but someone could open up a business, they want to do automotive shop or something like that, is that something they?
That would be considered industrial.
But not apartments, right?
That is cruel.
No, I think apartments.
Apartments would be okay.
I think apartments are permitted.
Commercial.
Town center.
In town center?
Not in urban.
So to Chris's point, if an automotive company wanted to build, what could their square foot be?
13%?
15, 15.
Yeah, this, the growth allocation has no bearing on the permitted uses. The permitted uses are outlined in the zoning district, and the growth allocation or the critical area designations do not impact or open the door to additional or more intense uses. The uses are identified in the zoning district. It's, as Jeff noted, this is a matter of looking at lot coverage.
So we talk about what they're able to do as of right, and put aside the growth allocation. I just want to sort of explain to people that if they did something that's within the right, smaller, not the growth allocation, that's not something that comes before the commissioners.
Correct.
That they would just go ahead and do that. I mean, I think there's, some people have this feeling like that, there's this vote today, or not today, but there's this hearing today, there's a vote, whether they're not a storage unit, and if there's no storage unit, then nothing goes there. But that's not true, right? There's, they could build something else there, right?
And they would have to meet 15% of the limited development area, which is the yellow portion of the parcel. They would not be able to use the lot coverage that would be allocated to the RCA portion of the parcel, because commercial and industrial uses aren't permitted in the RCA.
But this allows them to use the RCA area? I mean, as far as, and the growth allocation to get the 13%?
They're not using, they're not requesting growth allocation in the RCA.
I understand that, but are they not using that square footage?
No.
They just don't have any, they don't have any density restrictions on the IDA, which is what allows. is what allows...
Okay, well, I'll ask a question.
You're talking about the floor area. I think that's what you mean.
Talking about the impervious area that the project...
The floor area, so...
Building, parking lot, and impervious.
The floor area is totally different from the impervious area. They are utilizing RCA acreage for their floor area calculation, which allows them the size of the building, but you have an impervious cover requirement as well, but they can't, without growth allocation, they can't use that impervious coverage that would be within the RCA in the LDA.
Right.
Because they're two separate definitions, I guess, is how it's looked at.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for the staff?
So just so I understand, yellow area that you're alluding to is 1.968 acres. So you're saying 15% of that could be, if this was an automotive, to the commissioners' point, 15% of that?
Do you have your little, pull the drawing back up on?
Give me a second.
Which one do you want to move to? The one, the overhead that shows the buffers and all that stuff.
Probably the fourth or fifth slide. The one with the yellow and the green, yep, that one right there. So the existing, this image is showing what the requested intense development area is and what it would be resulting after the approval of growth allocation. At this point in time, all of that, 2.811 acres and the 1.96 acres are all limited development area. So you've got a total of, sorry, I'm using my calculator.
4.7 acres.
And the remaining is 4.2 of the, is RCA. So you're, that's the existing breakdown of it, but the proposed breakdown is 2.811 of intense development area, and then the remainder, 1.968, will remain in limited development area, not the entire limited development area as proposed for growth allocation, mainly due to wetlands that are on the parcel.
To clarify, the growth allocation request is not a request for the entire acreage of the parcel, and is not proposed in the resource conservation area, and it is only requested for a portion of the LDA area. So the growth allocation is for a limited area within the LDA to become IDA.
Which is what that 1.969 acres is?
2.8. The red hatched area is what they're requesting the growth allocation for.
But it's 2.8 acres of the nine-acre parcel is the request.
Right, that's what I was getting at, the nine-acre, the green, the wooded area counts towards that nine acres.
Yes.
And that's what I'm saying, so you would factor the nine acres with the impervious, and which gives us the 13 or 14%.
No, that's what I'm saying, you take that, you have to take that out, you're only allowed to use it within the...
The yellow.
The yellow.
Yes.
It's what's in the yellow, the green can't count for that.
So all the yellow, if we're counting all the yellow plus the red hash, that's giving us the percentage for the impervious.
That's giving you the acreage of the existing LDA.
How much impervious was there again, that you had?
That you're allowed to have in the LDA?
Yeah.
At 15%, it's roughly 47 acres.
15%, but how much do you have with this project?
We have a total of 1.4.
No, but percentage?
Percentage-wise, including the entire property, it comes in at 16%.
That's what I'm saying, so they're counting the entire property, and they're coming in at that percentage.
Just as in terms, just in terms of what the impact is on the overall property.
Okay. That's, that's, okay. And when you say overall, you're...
Including the whole nine acres.
Thank you. That's what I was getting at. Okay. All right, well, any other questions? We can bring it back up later, think of some more, but we want to let the developer know the... Yeah. Yep, Joe, you guys, you want, you need some more time? Okay, all right.
Thanks, Stephen.
I don't know. Joe, you guys, we have to hold under three minutes?
We typically do, yeah. Anybody, public comment, give them three minutes. Yeah, if I could address that, though, I know you do typically for legislative, you know, amendments and things like this, but a growth allocating, allocation procedure is adjudicatory, it's, you have to make findings, I have to create a record. Now, I don't plan on belaboring things, but I will need more than three minutes to do that, and I think the case law supports that. Not only am I entitled to do it, but you need to have that record for you to make findings, whether it's in favor or opposed, you need to go to that record, so I have to create it. So I would like a little more than that, three minutes.
Yeah, it, this hearing is a hybrid, I mean, there's case law on it, I mean, it's adjudicatory, so he has to, you know, give you the facts from which you can make a decision, because your decision has to be made on those...
Your legal representation, are you saying it's fine?
Yes.
Okay. Have a seat.
And I won't belabor things, because planning staff, as usual, did a very detailed job. Joseph Stevens, 114 West Water Street, Centerville, Maryland, on behalf of the applicant. And for the record, I'm going to give Mr. Thompson, I believe you have most of this that was given to you via email, and maybe even hard copy, but I want to make sure there's a record copy. So I'm going to provide Mr. Thompson with all of this, that is all the materials that Ms. Jones had provided to you, that we've provided. And there's a few other slides that I have copies of in here that Mr. Sharon and myself will go through as part of our presentation and creating the record. They're all pre-marked, yes, they're all marked. Every single one is marked. And then I'm going to just give you a, county commissioners, I'm just going to pass out to you, a, those are all the exhibits, that's just a list of them, so if you ever want to look at the records, say, where was that, you can go back and look at it.
And just anybody in the public who wants a copy of the list of exhibits, you can reach out the commissioner's office and get a copy.
That's all, Mr. Thompson will have all that. And they're already, most of them already exist, as I said. So, you know, growth allocation is a mechanism that was set up in the critical area law to allow the county to change 5% of its critical area land to upgrade it to either LDA or IDA, because the critical area law, when it was established in the early 80s, recognized that the critical area meanders throughout counties and their growth areas where they have existing subdivisions, existing commercial uses. So they said, we're going to create a mechanism for local jurisdictions to recognize this and allow some additional development, some additional growth in the critical area. And that's the application that's before you today. What you'll see is, is that the applicant, the application, and the property location is in the county's growth area, and I'm going to go through that in just a minute in a little more detail. But it's in the county's growth area, it's in the county's area that's designated as a priority funding area, it's in a part of the county that's identified as enterprise zone, and this goes way back. So let me start by going way back, I'll let Mr. Sharon run these numbers. These are all in the record. Run the, you can see, go back, go back. Okay, so I have an arrow, a blue arrow pointing to the properties that are, how did it matter today? They were zoned in 1965 R3, so that was a high-density residential zoning district for the county back then. When the county did their first comprehensive rezoning in 1987, they zoned it, they zoned it urban commercial. So that's what that property was in 87, urban commercial, that has very limited requirements on lot coverage, so you can have high lot coverage in that area, and it allows a whole slew of commercial uses. Then the county rezoned it, kept, keeping it urban commercial for several years, keep going, Kevin. And then...
2004, 2010.
2010, designated a town center. So it's now town center, has been town center for all that time. Town center zoning allows multifamily, up to 10 units per acre. It's the same zoning where you see the Red Apple Plaza facilities, so you can get the gist of the intensity allowed under the underlying zoning. The reason why the applicant's requesting growth allocation, as I think Commissioner Moran had understood, is because they're designated limited development area, and in order for them to utilize the property consistent with the town center zoning, and even a little more lot coverage, they need to go to intense development area in order to do that. That lifts or removes the 15% limitation, has nothing to do with land uses. You can put, right now, you can put every land use on there with or without growth allocation, that you could with or without growth allocation, but you're limited on your impervious coverage. If it stays LDA, you can only go up to 15%. Mr. Sharon will go through the percentages that we're requesting in more detail in just a second. Why don't you give me the next one? Okay. So these are the comprehensive plans that the county's had, this is the 1993 comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan shows this property for urban development. Next one. Chester Community Plan from 1997, shows this property, town center.
I think it needs new batteries.
You can see, it's all right, because the next few plans are all the more recent plans. This is right out of, until I get to 2022. Every single one shows it for growth area, priority funding, and for mixed-use commercial development. And that's what the town center allows, mixed-use and commercial development, and in a priority funding area. It has public sewer, and there's public water near the property, and it's designated W2 and S1, because it has public sewer. So this is, this is a property that the county has identified to have some growth on it. And not only that, but we did a, and again, Ms. Jones' staff report hits upon all of it, if you look at the staff report to the Planning Commission, it's a really concise read in terms of plan consistency, consistency with the 2022 comprehensive plan. So I'm only going to mention a couple things. One is the significant limitation on sewer. The county, and we all know this, the plans, the plan says, limit residential growth on Kent Island, allow for redevelopment of properties, infill of properties, not with residential uses, and they don't use a lot of sewer and don't have impact on adequate public facilities. And, you know, I'll just, I want to read the section out of the plan. Acknowledge that adequate public facilities ordinance will remain in use, and future land use decisions will be based on available capacity for sewer, water, schools, and roads. Okay? So you don't want to do commercial, I mean residential, the applicant's not proposing residential, and you want low impact on adequate public facilities. Our traffic count shows that this will have less than, it won't even need an adequate public facility study for traffic, there'll be so few cars going there during peak hour, under 25 trips during peak hour, and that's in the record. Water and sewer allocation is minimal, absolutely minimal. There's some to the property now, I think they might need 500 more gallons at most to do this, and there's no impact on schools whatsoever. So it fits into the comprehensive plan squarely in regards to the use that's being proposed. And then finally, you know, the applicant has, I'll let Mr. Sharon get into it, the applicant has gone in and will be dedicating property, which does have value, because it provides the county with some access to the water, adjacent to an existing county open space property, and you'll see it, and then access to Piney Creek Road, which it doesn't have for that property now, as I understand it. Why don't you give me the next slide, because I want to talk about growth allocation for a second. Bruce can do it for you, want to advance one? Yeah. Yeah, perfect. So this is at the end of Ms. Jones' staff report to you, because it's hard for you to see up there, it's in the record, has been for months. These are the second, the bottom table are all the growth allocations that the county has granted, okay? So I want to reference a few of them so that you understand. The Kmart got 16 acres of growth allocation right on Route 50. The Maryland General, in order to do Red Apple Plaza, received growth allocation. There are a number of those through, and I'm going to ask for the next slide. You can see where, this is Kent Island, and this is your critical area map, which you have, I provided to you in the record. And you can see where growth allocation and IDA has been used. Now, not all this red is growth allocation.
Yeah, distinguish between the green and the red.
The green is what's in resource conservation area in the critical area. The yellow is what's in limited development area in the critical area, and the red is what's in intense development in the critical area. Critical area line goes inland from tidal waters 1,000 feet, so that's where you see land in the middle is not affected, you know, it's all white, okay, because that's not in the critical area, it's only 1,000 foot from tidal water. So as you move off the Bay Bridge, you can come to the, you see first the Kmart, which is the property right after the Route 8 overpass, if you're heading east, it would be on your right, receives 16 acres of growth allocation. Then as soon as you pass the Kmart, the two subdivisions right off of Route 50 there, Anchorage and Cox Creek Landing, growth allocation, all right? The, let me have the next slide, please. Okay. This is the Chester area. So if you look now, you see the Four Seasons to the north, which was all growth allocation, a large growth allocation request, obviously. And then you can come down, and you can see Gibson's Grant to the north. Gibson's Grant received growth allocation. In fact, Gibson's Grant was pre-mapped, so the county in the original growth, I know this because I was there and I worked on it, the county's original growth allocation, original critical area program, they took some growth allocation, and they pre-mapped it onto the Gibson's Grant property, and then when the development came in, Gibson's Grant, and you can see it in here, they actually had to get a little more, and they gave some back, and it went through a process, but it used a large chunk of growth allocation in order to do that development. If you look south of Gibson's Grant, south of Route 50, those properties there, many of them use growth allocations. K Wilson, which I believe has that property, there's references K Wilson on my list, got growth allocation, it was either for, for what is now Kangaroo Self-Storage or Jeff's Autobody, one of the two, I'm not exactly sure which one. And then as you move further east, you can see the yellow triangle, that's where the Nashville properties are today. And then why don't you go ahead, next slide, please? And this is Graysonville, and this, this one is very interesting, because if you look, if you come through the Kent Narrows, and you go through that grouping of IDA, and then you come to the next small one, and you see it on the south side, right where the Chester River Beach Road overpasses, you have what's known as Graysonville Station, that has the 7-Eleven, it has the, it has the U-Haul facility, has...
Patriot Fire.
The bank, Patriot Fire, that received growth allocation, right there off of Route 50. And the reason is, is because these properties were zoned in the growth area for, for commercial or mixed-use development. And when the applicants come in and say, look, I can't do a reasonable commercial or mixed-use development with 15% lot coverage, the law, the critical area program, provides local jurisdictions, the mechanism, to go ahead and say, okay, well, you can have a little bit of growth allocation in order to do it. And for the big projects that got growth allocation, the Four Seasons, the Gibson's Grant, and took a lot of growth allocation, the county exacted a lot of improved, public improvements, per se, parks, you know, the Four Seasons parks, and the water tower, and the comfort station for the Cross Island Trail, those were all exactions. But when it came to these small commercial properties, you know, the county was less severe because they recognized, look, you can't do anything on them, nobody can meet those 15% limitations, and build in accordance with the underlying zoning. So that's what the request is to you today. There have been, one I missed on the middle slide was also another mini-storage facility that got growth allocation, and it's right here on the list, you can see it, it's referred to as Gateway Self-Storage, George Peters, got two acres of growth allocation, thereabouts, in order to do the mini-storage. So this is not an unusual request. And with that, what I'd like to do is, is have Kevin, Sharon hit upon some of the site statistics that I think you had questions about, and then we'll, then that will conclude our presentation.
If I get this thing to work. There we go. All right, good evening, commissioners, Kevin Sharon, DMS and Associates. I just wanted to go through, there's an exhibit in your packet, which is this exhibit here, which is the Environmental Resource Exhibit. And I just kind of wanted to walk through it in piece by piece, I'll try to be quick. But just wanted to kind of show you how we approach a property. And when we looked at this property, it's unlike any other property where we start with the underlying environmental resources. So, the first thing, if I get the next slide, is this nine acres roughly, with the acre and a half that is the subject of being donated to the county, was the overall original project. It was 10 and a half acres. We then knew that the side, on the other side of Shamrock Right-Away, which is that roughly five and a quarter acres between the two red outlines, is the state's overpass right away. We knew that the area on the northeast was not going to be part of this development, so we just concentrated on the nine acres. If I get the next slide. So the first thing we did, one of the first things was identified the limits of the woods on the site. You can see on the west, there is a clearing, and that's where the two existing residences, two houses are. And what's referred to now is Nash Court, that's somewhat of an unimproved road that comes in to a bit of a turnaround. We get the next slide. So then we hired an environmental consultant to go out and delineate the limits of the non-tidal wetlands on the property. And that's shown in the darker area to the south. And then kind of the medium green is what Ms. Jones had referred to before, is the 25-foot non-tidal wetlands buffer. So we're starting to build the environmental tapestry, if you will, for what the site holds. The magenta line kind of squiggling down through the middle of the property is the critical area designation divide. And so everything to the east of that is the Resource Conservation Area, RCA. And the area to the west of that is the LDA. It's much more difficult to try to get growth allocation on an RCA to go to IDA. So early on, we decided that's not even a fight we want to try. So we concentrated on the LDA portion of that, if you can go to the next slide. And so then, okay, so then the next layer is a crosshatch there on the north and east side, and that is the 100-year floodplain limits. The floodplain in this area is elevation five, and we can talk about a little bit of that more, if you can go to the next slide. Okay, one ahead, but that's okay. So the, so that kind of set up where we wanted to concentrate the development. And it was very apparent, after going through that exercise, that really where the two houses were was where this development needed to be concentrated. So with that, and what is permitted on the site with the underlying zoning, and the use that the developer wanted to put on here, we came up with a layout that we feel is based on the environmental features around it, is very sensitive to the environmental features, but yet maximizes his project. So I know there's been a lot of misconception on the size of the building. I think a lot of people refer to it as 156,000 square foot building, thinking that that's the footprint of the building. The footprint is actually 130 by 300. It's still a big building, no doubt, but it's a 39,000 square foot footprint on four stories that gets it to 156,000. As part of the proposed conditions, we'll be upgrading Piney Creek Road from where the curb ends on the right-hand side down to the entrance. And we'll also be installing a public water main extension from the entrance of Gibson's Grant down to this project, and then any properties in between can connect to that. And it'll also provide fire protection as well with additional fire hydrants. What used to be Nash Court will be improved into a commercial entrance. And then we've also tried to limit the amount of impervious cover on site. Based on the floor area and the use, the project is required to have 28 parking spaces and four loading spaces, and we met that and did not exceed it. We are providing a cul-de-sac, kind of a reduced cul-de-sac, but still meets the turning radius for emergency vehicles, as well as patrons with trucks or cars and trailers. Stormwater management has been provided on site. We've submitted a conceptual stormwater management report to the county, and it's been reviewed and approved, as well as by critical area. The, if you can go to the next slide. Okay, go one more. So that is the footprint of the project with the amount of tree clearing that we're proposing. So if you go to the next slide, okay, so this slide shows kind of what Ms. Jones was describing before. On the south side, the brown hatched area is the wetland buffer that we're proposing as part of the project that might be disturbed during construction. We do have an MDE permit for that. They felt that that was a minimal request, and they've already issued that permit. The northeast corner of the building falls within the 100-foot floodplain, and according to FEMA, we are allowed to fill that floodplain, get the building up out of the floodplain. The floodplain, as I mentioned before, is a five. The finished, minimum finished floor would have to be seven to meet that flood requirement. And based on the topography of the property, we're probably going to be somewhere near a nine, so we'll be well out of the floodplain for that.
Just follow up on that. Could you go in a little more detail? I mean, this is typical in regards to coastal floodplains in this area all along the shore. Is that right?
Correct, yes.
And we're not asking for any special approvals from FEMA. This is part of their regulatory scheme.
That's correct.
They want you to elevate and flood-proof, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep. All right, next slide. So what this blue hatching demonstrates is the RCA area that's going to be left unchanged. And then the next slide. And as part of the development, we are proposing to deed-restrict the remaining LDA portion that's not being requested to be part of the IDA. And in doing so, that preserves about 7.62 acres of woods, with only about 1.4 acres of the fringe woods being removed, which by percentage of the overall nine acres is about 82% of the existing woods will remain. So, again, we were trying to fit a good-sized project in there, but be sensitive to the surrounding environment.
Let me ask a question on that. Is the amount of woodland that's being proposed to be cleared under this application more, less, or the same as what could be cleared if it was not re-designated to IDA?
Under the LDA, so we're proposing 1.4 acres, and under the, or under the LDA, you're permitted up to 1.52 acres.
So we're actually proposing to remove less trees than what we could under the existing designation of limited development area. And that's an important point I want to make. Really, this just boils down to the ability to do some additional lock coverage in this zone.
Correct.
Okay.
And speaking of lock coverage, that comes into stormwater management. As I mentioned earlier, we have two criteria for stormwater management. The county's ESD requirements, which is environmental site design, which essentially takes volumes of water that you have to treat. The conceptual stormwater report that we've put forth for the county to review, there's a 9,500 cubic feet requirement, and the facilities that we have designed in conceptual phase is about 14,000 cubic feet. So we're well over, we'll definitely be able to meet our stormwater requirements on site. For the second criteria, the critical area, they do their stormwater, and again, this is kicked in because we're requesting IDA, requesting growth allocation. Any IDA property that develops has to meet what the critical area calls a 10% pollutant reduction criteria. And they, rather than filtered volumes of water, they measure theirs based on pounds of phosphorus removed on an annual basis. It's a calculation that you go through based on the stormwater management features that you have on site.
Let me start asking. Could you explain just a little more detail what the 10% pollutant reduction means? What does that mean?
Well, they actually take samples, but it's based on removing phosphorus from a developed property.
So, but you have to reduce the amount of the idea and the requirement?
Yes.
Explain that.
So the 10% reduction is, whatever the existing site is now, you have to better it by 10% when you're done. So the 10% reduction is 10% reduced from as it sits right now with two houses on it. So in the end, this 156,000 square foot building will have better water quality leaving it than the two residences.
Okay. Very good. That's according to state law?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Good.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll just, let me go to the next slide. So just a couple of things to highlight is what we see as post-development benefits. About four and a quarter acres of RCA will remain in its current state. Shy of six acres of the nine acres will be deed-restricted from further development, which is about two-thirds of the site, of the site area. About one and a half acre of dedicated land to the county that could be used for passive recreation.
Could you tell me where, is that, show me up on the screen where that?
On the top right.
That top triangle?
Triangle, yes.
Why don't you get the, go ahead and move forward to the slide.
Yeah, okay, go. Go ahead, one more slide, if you would. So that, that triangle actually touches Piney Creek at the northeast corner. Obviously, you're not going to get vehicular access to the water, but it certainly could be a pedestrian access to the water. Another benefit to that is the property to the southeast of that, if you go to the next slide, now this zooms out quite a bit, but the area in blue is about 36 to 40 acres of county-owned land that was purchased back in 2002, that essentially is landlocked. There's no access from 50 or 301, and it does not quite go to Piney Creek roads right away. So that triangle, the one and a half acre dedication, could make that connection to the 36 acres, to the rest of the county land. The other benefit to making all that connection is if you go to the next slide, we'll take a look at what the Shamrock Road overpass could look like. Currently, the Cross Island Trail is constructed in the Shamrock Road right away. So by providing that connection, the acre and a half, it would provide the county a future path for the Cross Island Trail to make its connections, you know?
For those who aren't familiar, the State Highway Administration, as part of their overall capital projects years ago, acquired this right-of-way for an, to construct an overpass between Shamrock Road to the south and over Route 50 as part of their connection between north and south of Route 50. This has been acquired by the state, but it's not in any planning or funding phase. Planning Commission wanted us to look at that, and then to meet with State Highway and meet with the county to see if we could assist them in providing for a good connection there, and that's what we agreed to do, that's what shows it.
You go to the next slide, it just kind of zooms out and shows how that connection is anticipated, if and when it were to occur. And then, as I mentioned before, the area in white and all that right-of-way is about five and a quarter acres that, you know, could be overpass and fill and everything else, so. That concludes my slides. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And that, we're here to answer questions, you know, obviously throughout the rest of the hearing. I have the applicant, both Mr. Schultz with Nashville property, as well as Mr. Clow, who owns two other facilities in the area, one in Easton, one in Queen Anne's County. And so they're available to answer your questions as well, if you have some about the facilities. I would like to, at the end of the proceeding, you know, just reserve a right to just close and make a closing comment if I feel the need to, if you're so inclined to let me in the hour permits. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess. I know we've been here a while, but we'll take a five-minute recess and reconvene at 6:57.
He just loved it, man. They had it. Paddy, tat, tat.
I lost Phil.
His rebuttal's three minutes.
Right. Yeah, 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 yeah.
This is, that's it, yeah. None in the bag? No.
Where are the other two gone?
Oh, here's one, here's two.
There's two. I found one.
Okay, good. All righty. You have the floor.
We have a sign-in sheet, and for those who didn't read it, I'm going to read it to you. "Thank you for taking the time to express your views to the county commissioners during our public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes and less. Comments longer than three minutes must be submitted in writing. When you come forward, please speak clearly into the standing microphone and state your name, address, and topic of interest. In keeping with the dignity of the office, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner. The commissioners respect your desire and right to convey your message freely, but ask, as a courtesy to the board, that our citizens, that you respect the commissioners' request, but refrain from naming citizens and name-calling and the like." What I'd also like is if you come forward, if you haven't signed in, you need to sign in in order to speak. I was expecting more, but if your, if your testimony's basically going to be redundant or the same as the testimony that, that precedes you, you can adopt their testimony as your own, and that'll move this hearing along a little voice quicker. Don't want to show your effect to testify, but if it's redundant, the commissioners only really have to hear it one time. So with that, Scott, and I can't even read the last name, the first person on the list. Betterton, maybe?
Zetterstrom.
Zetterstrom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I probably couldn't have under, even if I could have read it.
Oh, it's very simple.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Scott Zetterstrom. I live at 186 Eleanor Street in Chester, that's the Gibson's Grant community. Just a little background, I'm an engineer, I have a consulting company, I design and build breweries, et cetera, breweries, wineries, distilleries, that sort of thing. So I am familiar with growth, I'm familiar with business, I understand the tax base, I understand property rights, and I respect property rights, so I just have a few concerns about this project. The first one is just the size of this thing. You can imagine, this is basically a football field four stories tall. I mean, that's a very large structure, and I appreciate the things that they've done, they changed the color, and they've added some window treatments and those things, and that certainly will help. You know, having more trees covering the building so we can't actually see it would help. I'm concerned about light effects from parking lot lights and security lights and those sorts of things. But even with those, those corrections, you know, that's still a very large structure, it's going to have visual impacts from not only 50, but Piney Creek and, of course, the Cross Island Trail. I'm also concerned about the effluent effects, as you guys talked about the hard surfaces, and I believe there are people here that are going to speak to that in detail, so I'll let, I'll leave that for them. And the last thing is also the impact on the Cross Island Trail itself. Currently, the Cross Island Trail shares Piney Creek Road, basically where this structure is coming, where the, where the parking lot is going to be, and there's going to be traffic now on the Cross Island Trail, effectively, where the two share. And so if there's some sort of mitigation that can happen there, that would be very good, but in general, this is, I feel, a very large project for not a very large space. There's also some concerns about acreage, et cetera, there's discrepancies between the tax map and the surveyor, et cetera, and that changes allocation percentages for coverage, et cetera, and those are just questions that I have that I'd like answered at some point, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. David Azar.
Good evening, commissioners, or is it morning? I'm David Azar, 209 Benton's Pleasure Road, Chester. I'm a local developer, I have apartments and condos and houses, and I have tenants. So of course, my play here is our tenants request time and time again, where can they find storage units? We do not have any ourselves. I think this is a need for the county, and when I build anything, I try to look at what is needed more than any other reasoning behind it. So I did send a letter to you, all of you, so you can refer back to that, but I'm here tonight just to push that across, that it's a need, it's people that are, that they might not be here in this room tonight because they don't come out to these meetings to say, "I need storage," but there is a great need for that, and we hear it all the time from my business. Thank you.
Jay Johns.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Jay Johns, I live at 215 Parks Road, Chester, Maryland. I have, I have several apartments and townhouses, as well as single-family homes from Kent Island to Queenstown. I echo those same concerns as Mr. Azar does. I often hear from my tenants the need for storage units and the lack of them. With all the new homes and apartments being built in the area, the need for this type of storage facility is necessary. I use the Cross Island Trail, and there are several windows along the trail that commercial buildings are visible. I feel that it is a much-needed business in a perfect area, it doesn't impact our schools, public facilities, or traffic. The trees that were shown in the visual demonstration will continue to grow and reduce the visibility. I'm requesting that the county commissioners grant growth allocation to the armored self-storage product in Chester. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Hirsch.
I'm Valerie, Valerie Hirsch, I live in Gibson Grant at 139 McKenney Court in Chester. My husband, Tom, and I respectfully request that the county commissioners consider or require the following before voting on this matter. First, require the developer to meet with the Gibson Grant community in accordance with the conditions established in the July 14th, 2022 concept plan approval. In the conditions established, the applicant was required to meet with adjacent property owners, owners, plural. A letter dated October 26th, 2022, sent by the Planning Commission to the Gibson Grant HOA specifically states Gibson Grant is an adjacent property. This meeting request is reasonable, and it is the right thing to do. All of our communities, all of our community rightfully, is rightfully concerned about the prospect of driving out of our beautiful residential area to be faced with the view of an ordinary, large industrial building. Many in our community will be able to see this building from their homes. We have a right to voice our concerns and get our questions answered in person. Second, require a significant reduction in the size of the building. We would suggest two or three stories maximum. Third, require the owner to create a public easement on Parcels 287 and 351 for public passive recreational use. This could be set up in the same fashion as the public 55-acre conservation park that the public uses, even though the Gibson Grant community owns and maintains and fully pays for it with no monetary support from the county. Fourth, consider whether the critical areas commission should weigh in. The Planning Commission finds, findings state there will be no impact to habitat, protection areas, and water quality impact are to be minimized. This is hard to comprehend, given the size of this building. Five, proactively address the Cross Island Trail safety concerns. The Cross Island Trail funnels users out onto the road right where the entrance of the facility will be. One question we want to ask the developer is, what are the plans to protect the trail users as well as the storage facility users from accidents?
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
James Hudson?
Yeah.
Need help? Can't feel my feet. I'm just giving you all the time.
You've been sitting a long time.
No, it's not my problem. I got a lot of other problems. I'm James Hudson, and my wife, Mary Ellen, are here. We've been at all of the hearings so far, we're probably the only ones that are adversely, in a, in a different nature than what I'm hearing from other people about additional storage and all that. This has been a family-owned home since 1988. The other copies had a 85 in there, that was a typo that I didn't pick up until today. I have written what, repeated what I have said previously for the council and the commissioners, and I kindly tried to put them in, in order of their importance because there's things that I don't see up here that I have been negotiating with the, the developers, and I think this is all self-explanatory. Obviously, we don't like the four-story building twenty feet off our property line. I have raised three grandchildren there, I have a great-grandson that'll be a year old the end of this month, and he's hoping to be raised there. We're not in a, I'm a retired Anarone County Police Officer with 30 years of service. I've lived here since the 70s, paid taxes, and I, I just don't know that, I just don't, I don't have a, a major complaint. It looks like it's being worked on, and I just hope it is, and I hope you all look at what I've prepared, make your own decisions. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity.
Jim, have they received this yet?
Who? No, nobody's received it. I got 11 copies there.
Oh, perfect. Well, we're going to make one of them part of the record, we'll distribute the other to the commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Stevens, one.
Thank you, sir.
I would have, I would have went into a lot of this, but when you're old and you got a lot of problems, I got, I can't hear for one thing, and I've, and I'm taking four insulin shots a day, and that's why I'm having trouble standing here. But other than that, enough complaints. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Enjoy your grandchild, children.
I will.
Karen, Mary?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to come here. I am, I'm Karen Mary, 125 Blue Bell Court in Chester, and I'm not used to doing this, I'm a little nervous, but I will say that I love this island, I love the Cross Island Trail. My husband and I are year-round users of it. I rediscovered bicycling last couple of years, and we use it all the time. So when I were, was driving past the, the sign, I looked at the, what it was specifying, and I thought, you know, no way, it just sounds kind of big for the area, and my concern is what it will do to the Cross Island Trail, what it will do to the surrounding neighbors, of which I'm one, that you have this, it just doesn't seem compatible for the scope of that, that trail, and I have concerns because that's one of the things we love, is being able to enjoy this beautiful island and having that space. So I am concerned about the access, and that's really I want to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve Pringle?
Hi, Steve Pringle, 480 Webb Foot Lane in Stevensville. I thought I was a lot further down the list, I wasn't ready yet. For the record, my testimony is going to be redundant. I think, I think that redundancy is kind of key here, when you have people saying the same things over and over and over again, it should give, give you a picture of how people feel. We are the community, you represent us. Please do so in this manner by looking at all the evidence, I don't want, I don't want this to be built here. Mr. Stevens sat here and explained to us tonight all of the examples of the growth allocation that's been changed. He did so as evidenced as to why this one should be also. I say, look at all that evidence, look at all the growth allocation we've already done, where does it stop? I draw the line in the sand here tonight with this project, I don't think we need further growth allocation that changes the use of any critical areas, especially for a project of the size of this. You know, myself and my neighbors have asked our local HOA to put in a cement patio or expand our driveway by 18 inches. We've been told no because it's impervious surface. Talking 18 inches of driveway, just so I get a little bit of extra parking spot. Okay, I get it, I let it go. Look at the size of this project, we're going to turn our, turn our eye the other way, I don't think this project should be built. With that said, please take, please take that in consideration and decide wisely, please.
Thank you. Robert Thompson?
Good evening. My name's Robert Thompson, I'm a resident of 154 Carriage East in Chester, that is in Gibson's Grant, and the thing that I just wanted to state, and may be a little redundant, but we're going from a limited development and resource conservation area to a four-story, probably 50-foot-high building, 156,000 square foot, and it's a warehouse. I think this is a pretty extreme change, and I think there are a lot of other uses for that property, and again, just if you all go out there and look, I really don't think it's consistent with everything else in that neighborhood, so, thank you.
Thank you. Gene Sadler?
I'm Gene Sadler, and I've lived with my husband in Graysonville at 805 Long Point Road for the past 28 years. Since we moved here in 1994, this area has grown exponentially, and our shorelines and critical areas are disappearing rapidly. The QAC comprehensive plan stresses the need to preserve our critical area land use and has designated certain areas as limited development for that purpose. Therefore, I strongly oppose the approval of a Chesapeake Bay critical area land use change from limited to intense development for the proposed armored storage building adjacent to Piney Creek and the Cross Island Trail. The proposed building will encroach on the adjoining forest area affecting the already scarce habitat areas remaining on the island for our disappearing wildlife. The monolithic scale of the proposed storage building will dwarf the properties on either side of it, with Mr. Hudson's yard only being 20 feet away from the four-story building. The developer acquired all the parcels after critical area regulations were established and is now asking the county to change long-established shoreline regulations so they can realize financial gain. If this change is approved, it will set a precedent that will allow commercial buildings of this size and scale to crop up anywhere a piece of land can accommodate them because they can change county critical area land use. I don't believe this is honoring the purpose of the QAC comprehensive plan. When allowing new development, growth allocations should take into consideration the economic advantages to the county. Will this storage facility provide meaningful jobs to warrant granting its application? Will it fulfill a need in the county for more storage, or are there many current facilities already adequate for our area? The facility is planned for 1,100 storage units. Can current Kent Island storage companies compete with this facility? There's a reason for designating critical area land use as limited development. Changing the designation to intense development to appease developers' desires to build bigger and bigger commercial buildings and/or residential developments will lead to the demise of the environmentally sensitive land bordering our beautiful Chesapeake Bay and surrounding tributaries. We will see significant changes in the coming years as a new bridge is built and the freeway is expanded with additional lanes and impervious surfaces. Maintaining existing longstanding critical area regulations is more important than ever. Please remain faithful to the intent of the QAC plan and deny this request.
Thank you. Joshua Willis?
My name's Joshua Willis, I live at 99 Annapolis View Road, lifelong Kent Island resident. I was hoping, before I get going, if you guys could clarify, I do have one question, and I was a little confused through this. Will any of, any RCA area be removed or altered with this? I was, none at all? Okay, all right, thank you. So I hear all the time that I'm against all development on Kent Island. I'm sure some of you that know me have heard that as well. This is a prime example of where I'm not. I'm actually not against the whole idea of what's going in, I'm just against the massive amount of what is being planned here. We have critical area restrictions for a reason, and we should respect them and the wildlife that they protect. I'm not fully, I am, I'm in full belief that a property owner should be able to do with he, what he wants with his property within the zoning guidelines, however, I am completely against the idea of rezoning something to allow that. So the 1.4- So the 1.4 acres of surrounding woodland to be removed will displace deer, turkey, hawks, turtles, bald eagles. I see them every week that I walk through there. Some of you may remember when Four Seasons began removing woodland and all the wild turkeys ran up to McDonald's and almost jetted into the highway. People saw them all over the Cross Island Trail, and who knows where they ended up? But the point I'm making is that, according to the World Animal Foundation, 137 animals, plants, and insects go extinct every day from deforestation. The reason that we have these critical area protections is to prevent that from happening worldwide. So again, while I'm not against this development as a whole, I just don't really understand why it just can't be downsized to fit in with this current zoning and not rezone something to allow something to be bigger. After all, there is a reason that 15% of land use is intended for this specific area. So I respectfully request that you turn this proposal down and just call for the applicants to return with something that fits within the allowed zoning. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Kinder?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Andrea Kinder. I'm from Hanover, Maryland, but I'm here representing Advantage Self-Storage. I'm gonna go ahead and, you guys should have received an email from the President, Jeff Kinder, but I was able to attend today, so I'll go ahead and, and go through our points. So we have four self-storage properties on Kent Island that we purchased in 2001. Jeff Kinder, he's been in the industry since 1987. He was, you know, part of public storage, which is one of the biggest REITs, you know, in the world. He served there as National Director of Marketing. He was COO of Canadian Warehouse, LTD, and Vice President of Operations there, and started Advantage. Our Kent Island acquisitions were second purchase as we began, began building the Advantage Company in 2000. I'm on the Board of Directors, or he's on the Board of Directors for Maryland Self-Storage and Colorado Self-Storage Association. So those are his, you know, his background. Second, I want to talk about numbers. You know, we had the developer saying we need storage, but according to, you know, national average, the national average is approximately eight square feet per person in a trade area. Recent developments in trade areas with a similar ratio have run it up to a mature operating level over a two-year period. Some developments in trade areas with an average two, eight, or greater have taken three to four years with the new projects to actually mature and, and, you know, reach maturity, or have not reached maturity within three to four years. Trade areas are usually measured within three to five miles. Because this is a more rural area, it's five to seven miles. Currently, within our five-mile radius of Chester and Stevensville, we're at 12.53 square feet per person, and our rating is competitive. With the subject property, it pushes us up to 18.52 square feet per person, and which means we're in a saturated market in terms of too much competition. If you look at the seven-mile radius, because we are a rural environment, currently we're at 23.41 square feet per person, which means we're overbuilt. And with the subject property, it pushes us up to 28.34 square feet per person. So that's well over eight. You know, our company has operated with mature but not exceptional occupancies in, basically even in the 80s, 80%, you know, over the years. Increasing self-storage capacity by over 50% will certainly have a debilitating impact on Kent Island and Graysonville stores, as well as Queenstown. Only the developer can determine whether they think the risk-reward of a new store in an already competitive market is worth it. He can say with confidence, however, that the people of Queen Anne's County are well-served by the existing supply. Our third point is the ethics and community. I'm sure, you know, we already talked, everyone's talked about and expressed passionately about the critical area environmental protections, the Save the Bay impacts of the surface water retention, and the impact of refaring zone, which is the subject property would encroach, and the fact that it's a tallest structure on the gateway to the eastern shore. Light, you know, light pollution, traffic, all that kind of stuff.
Kim, if you want to, if you want to submit the rest of your presentation to us?
Yes, I can.
Your three minutes is up.
And it's actually, that was also submitted by email, where she read, so we do have that.
We have that already? Okay. Thank you. Barry Waterman?
Barry Waterman, Centerville, Maryland. I've been in the local real estate industry for roughly 40 years. And I would tell you that, over that period of time, there has probably never been a significant proposal in Queen Anne's County that wasn't too big, too ugly, or wasn't going to ruin the area for, for some reason. Yet, looking back, the industrial park is a tremendous employment center and a huge asset to Queen Anne's County. Gibson's Grant, Four Seasons, fantastic communities, full of wonderful people who pay a lot of money in taxes. So this shouldn't be about, do we like or not like the process, the project? It should be about, does it meet or not meet the criteria? And the first thing on that is that the critical area ordinance was never intended, nor does it prohibit growth in a critical area. All it is is an overlay zone that creates additional requirements for any development that does take place there. Growth allocation was part of the critical area law when it was originally passed in 1984, and it's always been intended to be there as a way for counties to have a certain amount of growth. Is there a line in the sand? Is there an end to growth allocation? Absolutely. You have, I don't know, roughly 800 acres of growth allocation for the rest of time in Queen Anne's County. So what you should be doing is saying, does this, does this project before you for growth allocation check all the boxes? Is there a community benefit? In this case, the not only donated land, but the taxes on this every year have got to be, I don't know, $20,000, $30,000 a year? And how much services does it require? Virtually nothing. How much sewer does it use up? Virtually nothing. A whole lot less need for a project like this than 100 apartments that could go on that same property. In terms of, is it too big or not too big? I really think that, that the county needs to take a longer view of development. We need to maximize the development on each piece of property so that we can maintain undeveloped properties as much as possible. If you, if there is a need, and I have no idea whether there's a need for this much storage, but if there's a need for this much storage, and I would say that I doubt very many developers would go build something where there's no need, but if there's a need for this much storage, and it's not built in a four-story building, it's gonna be built in four one-story buildings, use four times as much ground, have four times the impact that this has. It's a fact that, in the critical area ordinance, they have to improve water quality after construction than before construction. So there is no question that this is, this is not going to be bad for the environment. Is it gonna eat up some trees? Absolutely. Is it, is there a deer or squirrel or any number of other animals living there? Certainly. Yet, if there's a demand for this, you all have to balance that. So if they check all the boxes of a law that's been on the books since 1984, you're not changing anything. You're just using the law as it's proposed to be used to determine this is a valid use of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last person on the list, but I guess we need to address the correspondence you read.
I think you got some up.
We have two people on Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Our first comments phone comes from Bob Zillig, I believe.
Hello? Did you guys see you, Ken?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all for giving me my three minutes. So I guess, Commissioners, our county leaders, I think you're faced with the decision of deciding whether 30-plus years of critical area environmental protections will be changed from limited to intense development, allowing this structure to be built. The developer has effectively worked within this system to pursue this business venture, and it's within their rights to ask for growth allocation. However, just because the project is in the growth area, is considered redevelopment, and has water and sewage, doesn't mean you have to say yes to weakening the longstanding environmental protections by granting intense development status. According to the website, it's only 2.8, 2.8 acres, three acres, but that is exactly the concern, especially for these infill, less-than-20-acre, non-ad adjacency, intense development, commercial projects. What we cannot look like if the county remaining 360 acres of growth allocation was granted out in a similar way, enabling these pop-up commercial developments within the critical area along Route 50, Grove Court, through Kent Island and Graysonville? Would we become like a lumbering in the eastern shore? Encouraging this type of infill, standalone, commercial developments only contributes to the spread of commercial sprawl through the center of Kent Island? Is this what our community wants? It's created the comprehensive, and created the comprehensive plan. The county solicited incorporated community input. The result is a plan that has many qualitative statements about protecting sensitive critical area shoreline, managing impervious surfaces, strengthening sense of community, and managing infill developments, promoting resiliency, and protecting scenic beauty and woodlands, all of which is inconsistent with this proposal. Are these qualitative strategies just aspirational comments or window dressing put into the comprehensive plan? Many of the development decisions contributing to commercial and residential growth on Kent Island have occurred before your tenure, but this decision is yours alone to weigh. Is this proposal adding substantial economic benefit to our community? Is it consistent with the guiding principles and environmental stewardship vision of our comprehensive plan? Is the Chesapeake Bay critical area really the right place for this type and scale of commercial facility? In closing, our community looks to your leadership to decide whether this project at this location is the right decision for Kent Island. Please ask yourself, will our community, driving past on Route 50 or cycling along the Cross Island Trail, understand why this massive facility was so critically needed that it had to be shoehorned into the critical area? What makes Kent Island so special and unique is that it's an island. We need to protect the environmentally sensitive critical areas that surround our island from excessive commercial encroachment, so that future generations can enjoy what we enjoy today. Thank you for your consideration.
And our second comments phone comes from Andrew Costello.
Hi, everybody. Really hard to follow so many great speakers so far. My name's Andrew Costello. I reside at 142 Carriage East within Gibson's Grant as well. And I'm asking the Commissioner here tonight to decline the request for growth allocation, to reassign this land from LDA to IDA. As a county, we've enacted laws to limit the size and footprint of facilities within the county to retain our pastoral atmosphere and minimize the impact of our developments on the surrounding environment. As discussed during Mr. Stevens' presentation earlier, other projects within the Kent Island area, such as Gibson's Grant, have undergone extensive rework and accommodation to maintain the size and scale of our community, with water as a natural boundary on all four sides. My concerns with this project include several significant issues that will impact the neighbors throughout the Kent Island community. One, from an architectural perspective, the developers did concede the addition of Bermuda Shutters, but I would challenge that the current design includes no consideration or reference to the local and well-documented architectural history of the eastern shore. This building looks no different than any other big box in any other community across our country. And I would respectfully ask the county Commissioners to consider whether the building blends in with the historical and local building aesthetic. Secondly, from a light pollution concern, there have been several pre-existing facilities on Piney Creek that have deployed updated LED lighting that caused excessive spillover and light pollution onto the neighboring properties, and which is visible from several miles away. I would ask that the board require whatever lighting is deployed on the property be confined to the property and avoid turning this residential neighborhood into a commercial hub. From a traffic consideration perspective, the road currently lacks the infrastructure for two-way traffic and the Cross Island Trail merging into the roadway, as others have noted here on the discussion. Even with the current proposed roadway extension and their assessment of only 25 vehicles per hour, this is likely to increase more than 100-fold of vehicles currently using the road today. I would ask the county Commissioners to request and require extensive traffic studies be conducted to ensure that our county infrastructure can support the commercial use of what is now currently residential land. And fourthly, the area of the property is identified by the Maryland Historic Trust as the site for QA 359, the Nash House site. Even earlier maps showed there were likely communities of oystermen that lived in the area, and I would encourage the Commissioners to require exploration of the history of the site before proceeding with any redevelopment. As a voting resident of the county and neighbor to the development, I would strongly encourage the county Commissioners to require further exploration of the size, architecture, design, lighting, traffic, historical and environmental impacts before granting approval to move forward with granting growth allocation for the property from LDA to IDA to allow the facility nearly twice the size of target that recently opened with significant discussion. Thank you very much.
I just missed the sign-in sheet. Do you want me to sign? Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Annie Richards. I am the Chester Riverkeeper with Shore Rivers in Chestertown. Today, I'm requesting that the Commissioners deny this petition for growth allocation and leave Kent Island's critical area intact. Shore Rivers actually recommends that intense development areas granted through growth allocation in critical areas should be reserved for government and emergency services only. This is because this critical area is an imperative buffer for improving water quality, for absorbing flooding from the floodplain, which protects communities that live near the water, but also it filters nutrients and pollutants that head from our communities and from our land and our watershed into the river. This parcel located within the critical area contains marshland, woodland habitat, and other sensitive areas that Queen Anne's County seeks to protect per its comprehensive plan. The impervious surface of a 156,000-square-foot building will impact the surrounding sensitive areas, which absorb, filter, and treat stormwater runoff before it enters local waterways. According to STACK documents provided by county staff last summer, this plan fails to avoid sensitive areas and requires special authorizations to encroach on them. The proposed development includes encroachments that eliminate woodland habitat, transitional habitats, and encroach on the natural floodplain. These transitional habitats are critical for protecting water quality in the Chester River and serve as a buffer for neighboring communities from flooding and other impacts from climate change. I can't emphasize enough, I support Bob Zillig's testimony in, in terms of us evaluating the qualitative statements that we have in our comprehensive plan. I think a lot of work, tremendous amount of work, had gone into creating the Environmental Water Resources chapter of the comprehensive plan. And I often find myself here in this position advocating against development product, projects that don't seem to uphold the values that we've placed in our comprehensive plan under the environmental chapter. So I would also add that partnering environmental organization, QACA, supports this position. And with that, thank you for your consideration.
Commissioners, we had 79 emails come in. So we're going to kind of summarize the people that were for and the people that were against, and why they were for or against it. Under the county Commissioners' press and public comment email, we received 16 emails opposing the armored storage self-project, self-storage project. 13 of the 16 emails were against this due to the armored storage unit being a four-story building, and it was said that it would be an eyesore to the Gibson's Grant community and the Cross Island Trail, and the negative environmental impact this project would have. The people who submitted that email were Sarah Broccolino, Catherine Donovan, Joyce McKenzie, Bob Willis, Dennis Leahy, Deborah Grollman, James Perico, Sheila Willis, Neil Bates, Fred Koch, Joshua Willis, Kelly Wong, and Teresa Tamborino. We then had three opposing emails who were against this project due to the number of storage facilities already located on Kent Island. They were from Leslie Perico, Leslie Ruth, and Laura Lugembeal White, and then we also had a voicemail in opposition from David Ruth. We then received 14 emails supporting the armored storage self, armored self-storage project.
How many persons?
14. These emails say that there's a lack of climate-controlled self-storage facilities in this area, that the storage units that are available from other self-storage businesses are small, as someone stated, they had to rent numerous units just to accommodate their storage needs, and due to the number of apartments being built in the area, there is a need for more self-storage units, as apartments have smaller storage space, space. These emails were submitted from the Quans County Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, Barry Waterman, Chris Conley, Brad Hall, Susan Vienna, Justin Kiernan, Janice Hiraida, Gloria Peethman, Albie Kimball, Mark Shelby, Donald Brayden, Kenneth Roderick, Thomas Norman, and Rob Marsh. In addition to the press and public comment email, there were 49 emails sent to the county Commissioners' office and the county administration's inbox. 47 were in opposition, and two emails were in support. The 47 people The 47 people that were in opposition were David and Kathy Arul, Vasilika Aranandu and Arjaska, Eric and Catherine Birnbaum, Susan Buckingham, Laura Connor, Bente Cooney, Kim Couch, Ginger Cushing, Tom Davies, Frank D. Giellardo, Linda Elias, Chuck Elkins, Melissa Garcia, Marion Greer, Margaret Hardy, Sheila Herman, Valerie and Thom Hirsch, Cheryl Hyuk, Lenny and Janine Jackamowicz, Gaila Jane, Jennifer Jeffries, Jeff Kinder, Jamie and Tracy Kinzel, Erica Kreschkin, Amerilis Lenero, Joanne McMillan, William McWhitt, Lynn Mason, Dawn and John McKnight, Molly Miles, Barbara North, Diana Petrowick, John Pringle, Annie Richards, Steve Roman, Catherine Shinasi, Heather Skipper, Cheryl Smeja, Kim and Rob Solomon, Sonya, Catherine Tingwall, Dave and Debbie Tolbert, Carol Tripp, Robert Wesker, Michael Williams, Scott and Linda Zederstrom, and Bob Zelig. The two who were in support were David Azar and Laura Fortnoy.
Thank you, Bruce.
And all those emails, we, part of the record.
Part of the record, yeah.
Jeff, do you want to see if anybody else wants to testify that missed signing up?
Anyone else like the opportunity?
We could come up, come on up and sign the record.
I'm sorry, get you to sign in.
If anybody else wants to speak, please come on now. You can sign while she's...
I'm Susan Vienna, and I live at 2216 Piney Creek Road. I sent my email, and he put mine in as about storage facilities, but I live right across the street from Nash Court, right on Piney Creek Road, and I've watched them work on this development, and Mr. Hudson and I and his family are probably the most impacted by this. And I think this is probably the best use of this storage, this area right there. It's going to be not noise, not a lot of impact, not a lot of traffic. I live and work, run my business right there, so I'm there 24/7. So I would encourage you to approve the growth allocation. There have been other things that they've been thinking of doing. There's going to be townhouses there, assisted living, all kinds of things that'd probably be more impactful to our little area there. So I would like you to approve the growth allocation. Thank you.
Roland Voight?
I didn't take you long enough there.
Hi, I'm Roland Voight. I live at 713 Cloverfield Drive in Stevensville. My wife and I, we use that trail every single day, riding our bikes or walking one or the other. We're senior citizens from here on Kent Island, and I'm confused because they're saying there's a big need for storage, but yet we have six storage facilities on Kent Island right now, plus others that are right in Graysonville, just on the other side of the Cantonara's Bridge. I really don't see the need for another storage facility on Kent Island, especially something that big that's going to encroach on the wetlands where we see so much wildlife every day when we go down through there. There's deer out there feeding in those fields, right where they're talking about putting this facility every night, a whole herd of deer. Now you're going to misplace them? You know, we're running out of places for the deer on this island. There are beautiful deer on this island. There's over 300 species of birds on this island. You're taking away more area for the birds. Please deny this. Thank you.
Any other tape?
We did have someone, sorry, on Zoom that turned on the camera, but I wasn't sure if they wanted to make comment.
So Susan, in Zoom, if you could just wave if you're here to make comment? Okay, perfect.
Hi, I'm Susan Buckingham. I live in Chester, Maryland. I'm very familiar with the area that would be impacted here as it's on the Cross Island Trail, as everyone has said, a heavily used recreational facility that amenity that we have here on Kent Island. What some people may know, but no one has mentioned, which is a little bit different from what everybody else has said, is that about a half a mile from there on the water is a heronry that I suspect would be heavily impacted by a large construction project like this. And I think it's close enough that it would definitely disturb the heronry there on the point of land sort of opposite Gibson's Grant there. And so I wrote an email, and I'm just reiterating now that I ask you to deny this change in zoning. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Mr. Stevens, you asked for an opportunity to close or address issues that came up.
I would relinquish that opportunity to let Mr. Schultz speak. He's the one who is one of the owners, and so I'll relinquish that. Mr. Schultz will come up and address you all.
Mr. Schultz, in all fairness, please keep it to three minutes.
I don't even know where to start. I mean, I think there's a lot of misinformation. The trail is really not going to be impacted. In fact, it's going to be approved upon. The trail where it comes out of the woods and hits Piney Creek Road is only 25 feet of trail there, and we're going to widen that road, we'll restrike the trail, we'll make it safe there, whatever capacity is needed when we go through our site plan with the county. You know, the competition thing, I think, is a silly argument. Actually, I'd be in favor of that if competition was a factor in all business decisions. So if we're going to use that as a factor, I would say I'm in favor of it. That means no more restaurants, no more hotels, no more marinas. We have enough. But it's a little disingenuous for an owner to sit up here and say we got enough. That's very self-serving. So I think the competition takes care of itself. We've got a number of people in the Long Point development that are against our project because was admitted to me by one of the staunch opponents of this project that they're got, I don't know, 10 or 12 other people opposing this project because they're loading their guns before a project that's coming before them at Long Point Road. And as admitted, he admitted to me, I think in fact I wrote it down, that he said, "Jody, I don't give a damn about your project. I can't even see your project from my house. All I care about is the project, a boat facility that's coming on in front of our project." So I think that's a little disingenuous. I don't know if you had any questions. I mean, we've worked hard on this. You know, this doesn't come easily. We've been working on this for two years through several renditions of apartments and condos. We had an assisted living facility. We even had a hotel we were going to put there at one time, and we eliminated all those proposals because we felt like this was the best in there. Mr. Cloud, who's going to be develop, who's going to be building the project, has several self-storage units, and this is an indoor self-storage facility. Now, when we say there's 10 or 11 up and down the road, that's true, but they're all outdoor, unsightly, roll-the-garage-door of units. And the one opponent here that we have from advantage, I mean, if you want to talk about unsightly on the trail, when you walk down that and look at the back of their building, I think they should probably take a look around back if they're really concerned with the appearance of a building because it's not very appealing. No stormwater control that I see on the back of that building in particular. So I think Mr. Cloud's going to come up and make some comments, but this is indoor climate-controlled self-storage. There's only one facility in the county like that, and it is, I called the other day, and the lady said she had five units, and if I didn't get up there by the weekend, she probably would have none, so.
Thank you.
I'll just say that Mr. Cloud's here in case you have questions. He doesn't have anything more than he needs to be said, but if you have questions for him, as the owner and operator, he's here.
Hi, Doug.
No? No? We're good?
Commissioners, your ballgame. I mean, the option is you can have a vote tonight, you can option to table it to a later time. I would suggest if you table it that you either close the hearing tonight or pick a time when, you know, you're not going to take additional evidence so we know when we're done.
Well, we're definitely going to close the hearing tonight, and we are going to take emails, and if, we will still take the information if anybody wants emails or something we have not heard already. And I think we've covered, you know, the bases on this, and we're going to hold this for two weeks, and we'll vote at our next meeting.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Technically, it's three weeks.
Yeah. Three weeks.
Yes. Thanks for your time. Thank you very much. I appreciate the indulgence. Thank you.
Just these action items, like three of them. We're still going to have a meeting, so if you could take it to the hallway, please. Thank you. Did an admirable job. You came on a good night tonight.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Be told, Pat, he's got to make sure he gets here next time.
Well, that first one was tough.
Yeah.
All right. All right, commissioners, we turn back to tab number three, finish out our action items for this evening. We've got a few left to go here. I'm sorry, what tab? Tab number three, action items, tab three. We left off with...
Number seven.
Number seven?
Yes.
So please turn to tab three. Item seven, pages 29 through 34, and this is a property lien nuisance violation as resolution 2302 for unmanaged high vegetation on property owned by Palmer Council at 1118 Price Station Road.
I move that we approve resolution 23-02 to place a lien on the property located at 1118 Price Station Road, Price, Maryland, in the amount of $400.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Fire away.
That one's close to my house, so I might have to look at that one.
Why doesn't Jack mow the lawn?
Good point.
I don't really have anything else to do. I really should get out there and mow the lawns.
My real question is, is this person a repeat person like the last person? This is years that they do this to us?
I don't specifically, but most of them are repeat offenders.
How can I get that?
If you would like that, we can have that when we get these to find out the background.
I would like that information and the background if they're not paying their bills. And it's the same one for the second, the next one, too.
I had curiosity because you're...
Well, if it's a first-time issue, I would not vote for it. If they're a repeat like the last person was, then I would vote to put the lien on.
So I'm pretty sure that they're sent several notifications. It's not sent one notification, to cut your grass. It's several notifications that keep going out to the same homeowner or the owner of the property on record, and yet nothing is ever done. Yeah, even if it's the first time we had to cut it, we don't just go cut it or someone notice and go cut it. We're told them there's a violation, cure it. If you don't do it, we're going to mow it, and then when we mow it, we say we had to mow it, you got to pay, or there will be a lien against your property.
I would just like to request that we have the history.
Sure, no, absolutely.
That we have the history of each person we're putting a lien on.
You got it.
That's all.
Okay. All right. We've got two of them, right?
Yep.
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we did. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Salute.
All right, commissioners, item number eight, pages 35 through 40, is nuisance violation 2303 for unmanaged high vegetation on property owned by Arlene Williams located at 117 Coleman Drive.
Move to we approve resolution 2303 to place lien on property located 117 Coleman Drive, Chestertown, Maryland, amount of $300.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Salute.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Item number nine, on pages 41 and 42, is our Rural Legacy Priority Area Memorandum, and Donna Smith is here, Donna Landis-Smith. This one, we have two rural legacy areas, as you know, Lands End and Foreman Branch, and each year we sort of designate which one is our priority for the coming grant cycle. And I believe Donna was recommending Lands End for this next cycle.
Correct.
Very good.
I move to choose the Lands End Rural Legacy Area as priority for FY '24 funding.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll say that we're getting ready to talk about the money next, so we don't need to do that, so.
Let's get the easy one out of the way.
That's right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Salute.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Item number 10, on pages 43 and 44, is our MAF Matching Funds Program. This is an annual request. We'll reuse funds that we collect for agricultural land preservation and for state matching funds, and also we're looking for a general fund contribution this year, so I'll turn it over to Donna, let her explain all the specifics on this one.
Good evening, commissioners. The regular annual request for the matching funds is a maximum match of $1.3 million, We're actually starting off with a little more than what we did last year as far as our initial allocation. The state is telling us that we're going to have roughly $1.3 million. Last year was $892,000. So we're starting out with roughly about $500,000 more. We were able to secure through the agricultural transfer tax $354,900, and the solar receipts were $165,470. So if we were able to use some funds from the general fund in the amount of $812,963, we would be able to secure the $1.3 million, $333,333, which would give us an additional $2 million match from the state. So we would start out at $4.6 million plus, which is great. And just by my rough calculations, that would get us eight out of the 13 farms we submitted in the first round.
Really?
Nice.
All right. I move to approve $354,900 agricultural transfer tax, $165,470 solar tax receipts, and $812,963 in general fund transfer for a total of $1,333,333 towards the MAF Matching Funds Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Are you familiar with MAF? You want to give an explanation of what this is? We'd help you out.
Yeah. Good evening. I left your voicemail in case if you wanted to meet with me at some point in time so we can get down to the nitty-gritty. Basically, MAF is the Maryland Ag Land Preservation Foundation funded through the Maryland Department of Agriculture, and the funding comes from the ag transfer tax. When an individual owns an agricultural zone piece of property and they take a piece of that out and put it into residential use or solar tax use, they pay a 5% tax. That funds land preservation. The reason why our funding was so big this year, we had a farm in the northern part of the county that's going to be transferred over to solar, so they have to pay that 5% tax as well.
How many acres is that?
Roughly around 700.
700, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a big one. 700 of solar?
Yes. I don't know if that would be entirely the solar. It probably has a lot of roads, fences.
Which one is it?
Stoltzswitz Farm on Blanco Road. So it would have, of course, the substation that would be a part of it, the roads.
Is that Mark or Jonathan?
John. Correct. Yes. And he sold the entire farm to the solar company, so he's not doing a lease for the third year.
And they're going to sell it to Amazon.
Whatever. And that, well, no, I think it's slotted specifically for solar, so they would sell it to probably a power company, whether it be Dominion Electric or Washington Electric or Delmar Power. I don't know. That would be entirely up to the solar company. So that's how we derive our ag transfer tax. And those solar farms, once they're in place and they're on the books, they also pay an annual fee to the county. That is only when it's transferred over from ag use into the commercial use.
No, we get a personal property tax from them.
Correct.
They pay a personal property. That's where you're, that's where you're generating.
Do we know who owns that?
That's still owned by the property owners' low-end farms.
See, they have to, they have to file a Schedule One every year, Patrick, that shows the actual value of the solar panels on the property. The personal property tax is then calculated based on that. We have a pilot program in place that's paying the lieu taxes when you have the larger ones coming in. If they want to negotiate at a higher rate on a shorter term, that's made available. We haven't had anybody take us up on that yet, but, and we also don't have, right now, the, the one, I believe BB Knight's farm, has not even been recognized within that yet because the Schedule A, the Schedule One, has not been filed. And that one's going to be, that one's going to be sizable.
Yes. That's still owned by Knight Farms LLC, so he, he's on a limited, and I don't know the terms of the agreement, so it would be probably a thirty-year contract.
Typically, that's what they're running.
So I was talking with a farmer in Kent County, and this is the way he laid it out for me. He said that the solar company comes in and they lease the, his, his acreage.
Correct.
And it's huge compared to corn. He ends up transferring it to another solar company. They sell it to Amazon or Target or somebody. They purchase it or they lease it from them because they get the carbon neutral. Yeah, the green points, yeah, right. They get the green, they get the green points instead of putting it on their own stores. Instead of Target, putting it on their stores, they're buying chunks of land in Kent.
The landowner does not.
They probably just lease it for the generation, they don't even have to buy the farm. Or, or purchase it. Right. It's a huge win for the farmer, that's for sure.
Yeah, and the farmer doesn't actually do the negotiations, it's the solar company that does that.
Right.
So, so the premise behind why we do what we do with the solar tax, Patrick, just so you know, is because when you, if you were to develop that same seven hundred acres into a commercial shopping mall, you would get the development would be based on the value of that mall when it was built, right? So if you took average farmland that's in the ag where it's getting fifty percent of the existing property tax rate, right? You put a mall in there, now it's commercial, now you're getting the full vote on a hundred-million-dollar mall. But what's happening is these solar companies from out of town were coming in here wanting to buy six-hundred-acre farms, put in eighty-million-dollar solar projects, and still pay the fifty percent of the value of the ag land. So we looked at it and there was, happened to be a loophole in the Comar and said, you know what? This is just like building a shopping mall because you're taking our arable farmland, which is grade-one soil, which is very valuable, and you want to put this here for thirty years. So you need to pay the fair to put it here for thirty years, and the idea was put it right back into preservation elsewhere because you cannot develop solar on preserved land. You got to remember that. So anything that gets preserved cannot have solar.
I get it, but they're also not going to build a mall on Churchill. Right. Right? They're not going to put a mall in Engleside.
Keep in mind, these are conditional uses. It's not an automatic in because you own a farm that you can put commercial solar.
Oh, yeah, we, we.
You have to go through the whole process.
Whether or not they go to solar, that's not what Donna does, but what she does is she collects the money when they do do that, and then we, we use that to leverage money from the state to make sure more land is preserved, so there's less land available that can be.
She's actually protecting us from more solar, is what she's doing.
She is, she is.
In a roundabout way. The more we preserve, the more, it can't be solar here.
So Donna, share, share with Patrick where we rank with the other counties in the state of Maryland as far as land preservation.
We are ranked number two in the state. We are behind Carroll County by roughly around twelve thousand acres. We have over a hundred and fifteen farms on a waiting list to be funded, which is about roughly around twenty-five thousand acres just through the MAF program. The Rural Legacy Program that you just approved, the priority area, there's two areas within the county, those are almost thirty-five thousand acres, and I just did the grants today that will be turned in the first of February, and I have twenty-three properties on those lists waiting to get funded as well. This past year, we were awarded one-point-three million dollars from the Department of Natural Resources for Rural Legacy, and that has zero county dollars.
So go over just briefly with Patrick as well, how the farms qualify and how they, how they establish their, their rank or where they sit in that list of priority.
So when I initially meet with the landowner, they come in and they say, hey, we'd like to put our farm into land preservation. The first part of the criteria is you have to own at least fifty acres. If you own less than fifty acres, you have to be directly adjacent next to a preserved farm that's already in land preservation. Then we do a soil evaluation, so we look at the property and it's tillable land, which they farm, and woodland both. And we, I lay a soils map over there and figure out what, which tillable land and woodland is classified as class-one, class-two, and class-three soils. And the woodland is group-one and group-two soils. They're your prime agricultural soils for food and fiber production. So then we look at adjacency to other lands that are in land preservation. If it's a generational farm, if you live on the farm, if the farm has a homestead, if it's on a scenic byway, if you have a nutrient management plan, if you have a soil and water conservation plan, if you've been a century farm designated, if you're a repeat applicant, so they're awarded points for all these attributes of the farm. But the greatest weight is the soil types. The state's mission, mission statement says that we want to preserve the best prime agricultural soil for a production of food and fiber for the citizens of Maryland. So we're not going to buy a piece of land or not preserve a piece of land that has swamp on it or has, you know, an area next to the water that's not tillable, that's not eligible. It's prime agricultural soils. And then after they, I go through that ranking process, I put them in with the rest of the list, so it's not first come, first served. Some people have been on my list almost twenty years waiting for funding because they may have a little marginal soils or they may not have a house there, or they may not have anybody next to that, that's in preservation. We do have very large blocks of preservation. We have an area from Engleside all the way down to Queen Anne that's six thousand acres of contiguous land that's preserved. So to date, with our deed-restricted open space, our non-contiguous open space, our transfer development rights, Rural Legacy, and MAF, we are at eighty-five thousand acres of ag zone property that's preserved permanently, and we're roughly about thirty-six percent of the ag land in the county is permanently preserved. There's no buying out, there's no getting out, there's no paying back. It's permanent. And this past year, past year's funding, they apply in June of each year to the state, and the state tells us how many applicants we can take. This past year, we were able to submit fifteen applications. The previous year, it was ten. Probably the five or six years prior to that, it's been ten applicants. So even though I've got these hundred-and-twenty farmers or property owners waiting, I can only submit ten for funding.
And, and they get the, so the farmers, but you buy the property from the farmer?
No, no. No, we buy the, the development rates, yes.
They give pennies on the dollar.
How long can the farmer stay there till they?
The easement runs with the land.
Does that transfer to their next-akin?
It runs with the land. Whoever the owner is of the property, that easement stays with that.
Family or not, family, it will always be a farm.
That's correct.
It can always be used as a farm.
Yes.
And if you don't give Donna enough money to do this, she's going to be very mad at you. She leaves that part out.
Jack brought up a good point. We're paying on average about fifty percent of the appraised value. The landowner puts down a price that he wants to preserve the farm, and that's the second half of the weighted scoring. So the first round is based on quality of farm and all the attributes of the farm. Those applications get sent to the state, they get appraised, the state pays for the appraisals by two separate appraisers. When I get the appraisals back, then I look at that appraisal value per acre and compare it to the asking price of the farmer and the highest discount, so that's hypothetically, say, a, a farm, just for easy figuring, appraises for ten thousand dollars an acre, and they've asked for three thousand dollars an acre, it's a seventy percent discount. That farm then pops to the top. So then we combine scores of discounted value along with quality of farm.
Do you see the irony here? You should be saying this in front of all those people who just left because they would, they don't know, they don't know, they don't know that we're preserving all this land.
We, we, we bring this up many, many meetings, so we're blue in the face, we have maps that we've showed people to show.
One came up today.
And there are farms on Kent Island that are in preservation.
Yep. Look, when, when this past election saga, I stood on top of a mountain preached about it, you know, just as my group of commissioners since I've been serving, how much we've actually preserved. I mean, it's.
And it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything. This is a self-funded program.
It's a win-win.
It is a win-win because everybody likes to look at the farmland, and a lot of the people probably that were just here doesn't know anything exists north of Centerville, but it's an amazing part of the county, isn't it, Jack?
Absolutely, it is.
Wait a minute, Queens County goes past the Derris Bridge?
Yes, Chris. There's three other districts.
How many acres have you got in your district? Over fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand plus.
There's two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand acres in this county, he's got fifty thousand of it in District One. And it's, and I, and I have actually, I'm going to put this in front of you, I have sent a proposal through a member of the transition team for the governor, and I hope, I hope that he will be at the Taste of Maryland, the Agricultural Dinner next Thursday night, and if he does, I'm going to corner him because I would love to get a tour for the new treasurer, the new comptroller, and the governor, and the lieutenant governor, and we're going to take a tour of these areas that are in preservation, and I want to show them where their money is going and where it's being spent. The last time we did that, we did it with Peter Franchot, Nancy Kopp, and Lieutenant Governor Steele, and they were amazed at Lands End, at the houses that were not on these waterfront properties. So it, we need to showcase this. It's very important. And what better way than to show our state higher-ups where their money is going and where it's being invested?
Patrick, you, you haven't heard the best part. We get another bite at the apple. So explain to them the second round, which is where we really make out.
So some counties don't participate because their land values are so high, and Arundel County generally has maybe one application. Howard County does not participate. Montgomery County does not participate. Prince George's generally doesn't participate.
Because there's no more land there.
Well, the land values, the appraisal values are like eighteen to twenty-five thousand dollars an acre.
Sure.
Here, they're averaging seventy-eight hundred dollars an acre. So it doesn't really justify to preserve land there when you're only getting four or five thousand dollars an acre for preservation when the land values are twenty thousand dollars. So when the, when the state gets the initial pot of money, this year it's seventy-two million dollars, that seventy-two million dollars gets cut in half, and when that gets cut in half, each twenty-three counties get equal distribution of that thirty-six million. Then the remaining thirty-six million goes towards the matching funds program and for certified counties. You have to meet certain criteria to be a certified county. Seventeen out of the twenty-three counties are certified, we are one of them because we meet that criteria, so we get even more of that money back. So when, after they make the initial allocation of funds, like I say, I'll probably get eight farms, let's say we start out with the four-point-six million, my number-one ranked farm, it takes nine-hundred thousand, then the next farm takes a million, too, the next top farm takes three-hundred thousand, so we go all the way down until we run out of money. Now, there may be a little bit of money left over, might be a hundred thousand dollars, might be fifty thousand, that gets sent back to the state. And those counties that do not participate, their initial allocation of one-point-three million dollars gets sent back to the state.
And then what?
And that gets put into a pot of money. And then the state looks at every county as a whole, looking at their discounted values of asking price compared to appraisals. And because we are so low on our asking prices compared to appraisals, which is about fifty percent, we usually get more money. And this past year, we were able to get an additional seven-hundred thousand dollars in second-round offers, so we got two additional farms. So last year's investment, we initially got, the county put in one million, three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. Our first-round money was three million, nine-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-six dollars, plus the extra six-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand that we got, we ended up with five million, two-hundred, not, five million, two-hundred thousand, nine-hundred-and-six dollars. So every dollar that the county spent, we got three dollars and ninety cents in return.
And we've done better than that, too.
We had the one year where we got six million on the second round because nobody, yeah.
Yes, yes. Now, this coming year is looking very promising. You know, you just committed the one-point-three million, and there's a lot of counties that don't put in that kind of money. I feel very, very confident we'll break that six-million-dollar mark this year.
I guess actually we have to do that now.
For the second round?
Well, for the first round and the second together.
I got to sidetrack, we haven't voted on that. Now we got to vote to give her the money.
So I, I feel.
Been busy long enough.
But there's, there's, this program has a lot of fingers to it and a lot of different ways that you can get the funding. If we can keep the funding consistent and there, we have a great return on our money.
Question, we, we talked about deputy directors, you know, because we, the transition of folks moving out. Do you have, you're working with somebody already?
No, actually, my supervisor, Tony Ritchie, will be coming in front of you at your last February meeting. He's got the job descriptions written, he's put in the requests through Human Resources, and I believe he's talked to you, Todd, I don't know. He's talked to somebody, I don't know. I don't handle that. So he's putting in the request for that, and he will be meeting with you at the end of February because I need help right now. Because if I get six million dollars, oh.
Right.
And I just got, I have to go out, I have to go out and inspect these farms, too, every year, and I average about sixty-five farms that I have to inspect every year, which means I have to put my feet on the ground.
Farms that are in easements or farms that?
Yes, we have twenty farms that have gotten federal funding, they have to be inspected every year. The other farms that are just regular funding, it's every third year. Plus our Rural Legacy Farms, which we have, I don't even know how many, they have to be checked every year also.
Guess that's the price we pay for being second in the state when it comes to land preservation.
Yes, and every one of those have to have a soil and water conservation plan, and they all have to have their nutrient management plan updated. It's a lot of work.
Well, Jim will make a commitment that will get you some help.
I need help. I need help because I'm leaving in a few years. I'm done.
You're not allowed to leave until we're done.
No, wait, you don't have to say it like that. I'm done.
I have been doing between my, my federal job, yeah, my federal job and this, I've been working forty years. I'm tired. So I've been doing.
But you're not retired.
No.
I heard retired, not retired.
Yes, that man sitting in the back, he's planning on traveling with me, so.
Donna, thank you very much for all the amazing work you do.
Call a vote, Jim.
You want to read the motion again, Jack?
Just as, okay, yes, I moved all through, oh, no, that's the wrong one. Here we go. I moved to approve three-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, nine-hundred agricultural transfer tax, one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, four-seventy, and solar tax receipts, eight-hundred-and-twelve thousand, nine-sixty-three general fund transfer for a total of one million, three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars towards the MAF Matching Funds Program.
And we already had?
Yep.
We had the second, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Spend it.
If you have any questions for Donna, Nicole back here.
There's nobody better.
Nicole's my, my partner in crime.
Oh, yeah. Donna, why don't you buy the land at the armored, at the armored self-storage?
It's not ag land.
Not a farm.
It's not eligible, not ag land.
Town center.
We're not going down that rabbit hole.
We purchased with development rates on ag farms. That's in a growth area, that's a different area. Nicole's my, my partner in crime.
Oh, yeah.
Donna, why don't you buy the land at the armored, at the armored self-storage?
It's not actually a land.
Not a farm.
It's not eligible, not actually a land.
Town center.
We're not going down that rabbit hole.
We purchased with development rates on ag farms. That's in a growth area. That's a different area.
That's right. All right, don't leave yet. So item eleven, Commissioners, on page forty-five through eighty is a Rural Legacy Deed of Easement for the Pappas Farm, hundred and seventy point two acre property within the Land's End Rural Legacy Area. And this is the deed of conservation.
I move that we approve and execute the Rural Legacy Deed of Easement for Gus Pappas.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Summished?
That was zero county dollars in that easement acquisition, and you will have the next two hundred and seventeen acre property at your next meeting.
Very good. Very good.
Yeah, absolutely. And Patrick, the offer's still there. If you would like to learn more about land preservation, I'd be more than happy to meet with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You too.
You can be Donna's new helper.
I don't work, you.
All right, Commissioners, we have a few desk items here to cover, and then we'll be able to wrap up for this evening. First item is Desk Item One, and this is a renewed, refreshed letter to Governor Moore outlining the county's top budget priorities and our requests for funding assistance in the governor's pending budget and any supplemental budgets that he may put forth in the coming weeks. And this is identical to what we sent Governor Hogan and also Governor-elect Moore with our...
Do you just need a motion to send the letter?
I move to execute the letter to Governor Moore outlining the county's top priorities.
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Summished?
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Desk, Desk Item Three is an environmental policies letter. This is a draft letter that we would all be sending to the Moore Transition Team regarding environmental programs and priorities that we have in our jurisdiction, our county. This was requested from Jay Falsted, who is a member of the Moore Administration's Executive Policy Committee for Climate and the Environment. And we had a Zoom call with him last month, and I think this is in line with what we had prepared.
I move that we execute the letter to the Moore Miller Climate and Environmental Transition Team outlining the county's environmental goals.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Summished?
All right, Commissioners. Desk item number four is Budget Amendment CC forty-seven for the Roads Division. This is an, our Director of, excuse me, it's a tab number, it's a desk item. So it should be on your desktop here. I can give you a copy here. This is the big, long budget amendment for the Roads Board. Nicole Heffer here, our Director of Budget and Finance is here to answer any questions.
Other than the storm tonight.
So this just puts, so this basically just puts us in compliance because we're, the Roads Board is technically a separate board.
Well, it used to be, it was always a separate fund, and our auditors, I guess, finally figured out that we shouldn't have combined the Roads Board with the General Fund. It used to be separate all, because of the highway user revenues coming in. When the highway user revenues went away, or leased ninety-five percent on them, we put it together with General Fund, and auditors were saying, hey, you really shouldn't do that. It should be a separate fund. And this kinda reverses that action that we did about ten years ago.
And it moves the money out of the General Fund into...
Into a new fund that we're gonna establish for Roads Operating. Roads Capital isn't affected at all. We kept, that's always been separate. So it moves the budget authority out of the General Fund into this new fund that we're gonna set up. The highway user revenue that we received, some inspection fees, and then all of the expenditures. And then we will have to also add a transfer into the new fund, kind of like we do with some of the other agencies, so that the fund is balanced. Because there's not enough revenue to offset all of the expenditures.
It hasn't all been recognized yet. Makes sense.
And then going into the next budget cycle, we will have a separate Roads Fund that will be included in the budget. So we'll have to pull all of that out of the General Fund. And I will have another budget amendment for FY twenty-three. We just wanted to get this one in tonight because we just got this comment last week, but we're trying to close out twenty-two. So the timing was critical that we go ahead and get this budget amendment in so we can close out twenty-two. So sometime in the next few weeks, I'll have another amendment for twenty-three. And then in twenty-four, we'll get it straight with the budget as a separate fund.
Uh-huh. Okay, now that makes sense. Okay.
All right, so I make a motion to approve Budget Amendment CC dash four-seven. Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Everybody understands? Very well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bottom bean.
Good job, Kenny.
Right, thank you.
And you waited this whole time for all that.
But you can't say it wasn't a learning experience, right?
I figured there might be questions, so I was like, I'll stick around just a few minutes.
Oh, there's questions.
Thank you, Nicole. All right, thank you very much. All right, Commissioners, we had two discussion items. The first one was a request from our friends in Worcester County. They are seeking support for enabling legislation in Annapolis that would grant Eastern Shore code home rule counties the authority to increase hotel room tax from five to a maximum of six percent. And again, this is enabling legislation.
Keyword.
Enabling.
Make a motion to write the letter of support.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Again, enabling for the people at home. That gives the autonomy to the county to make that decision, not the state.
Correct.
Very well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Restained? Summished? Bottom bean.
No one else stayed, did they?
No.
He just said that.
He just said it all.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
He's getting tired.
I wanna make sure you're still awake over there. Okay.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. And our last, our last item is, we received an email concerning the LEOPS program for EMT and EMT-one positions. Currently, that program only applies to EMT-two status and above in paramedics. And there is a, there is a request out there or a group that are gonna put forth legislation in the General Assembly to allow that law to be changed at the state level so that the LEOPS program could be applied to EMT-one and EMT positions across the state. We have the ability to promote our EMTs up to the EM-two level, which makes them eligible for LEOPS currently, provided they get that training. So this is a state law that would allow that to be pushed down to a lower EMT job classification. So if you need more information about that, I haven't seen the bill or anything on this one yet.
I don't think it's been dropped yet.
I, I haven't seen it, so...
We'll get more after, from, probably Mako, we'll have a discussion on it.
Not this week, but probably next week. Yeah, they're figuring a lot of those are gonna get dropped.
They haven't got all that hashed out, yeah?
We only had eighteen last night. It was pretty low.
Really?
Yeah. But they said...
Get ready, it's the way this is going.
Next week.
It's coming.
Next week, not so much. So, we'll see.
Okay.
Very good.
All right.
Roundtable?
That's it.
Ain't nobody here for press and public. Well, Beth, be on the, play the other side. Come on up and say something. All right. Let's go in reverse. Number four.
Number four. I'm sure you guys who spoke, who served with Commissioner Olds might say something, but send out condolences to the family of Commissioner Olds, who served as a county commissioner from my district, just Commissioner Olds and Commissioner Anderson, and then, and then myself. We all know how much work it takes to be a county commissioner, and it's a lot more than just sitting at these meetings, a lot we do. So thank him for his service to the county, as well as his service to the United Community's Fire Department. You know, we were at their installation officers, myself and Commissioner Duvanel, the night before he passed, and they were honoring him for twenty-five years, I think, right? He wasn't able to make it because he wasn't feeling well, and obviously that was true story right there.
Plus, he was a PG, he was a PG fireman for twenty-five years, too.
Right, right. Quite a commitment to, to public service. I think it's commendable.
That's it.
So just to add to Commissioner Corcoran's comments about Dave Olds, he was also a coach, a youth sports coach in the community. Did that for years. So I wanted to make sure that got included. I had the opportunity to serve as a commissioner with Dave for four years. And I will tell you, he was diligent when it came to the expenditures of taxpayers' dollars. We would have department heads come in front of us. Steve Shanley has it easy. Dave Olds was here. Let me tell you something. He was brutal when it came to spending the taxpayers' dollars. So, you know, certainly, if you knew you were coming in front of the board back in two thousand eleven to fourteen, and Margie can assess to that, he was pretty tough on those department heads, and you had to really justify the expenditure. Again, just to reiterate, we also did a proclamation for Ron Sarneki, who was recognized. And I want to thank staff, Margie, and Scott Haas, who helped contribute to it, Billy Faust, to this proclamation that we had an opportunity to read to Ron Sarneki and present him with some other gifts that, that Margie provided for us. But the man, the history and the commitment that the guy committed to the fire service over the years was amazing. At one point, he was not just a battalion chief, but he was the chief. He served and traveled to support the Fallen Firefighters Foundation and fundraising efforts to make sure that that foundation takes care of families and whose, whose family members have died in the line of service. So that, that's always a great experience to be able to attend these things. And I will reiterate, and you'll hear from me again, these are volunteer fire companies. And if we had to go to a paid service, folks, it's a very, very expensive process. No doubt, there would have to be a tax increase in order to accommodate that. So when these volunteer firehouses are having fundraising events, whether they're having a spaghetti dinner or an oyster dinner, selling Christmas trees, or whatever they're doing, try to find it, a way to participate and help them out. That's all I have.
Very well. Patrick?
So I piggyback on what you gents are talking about. I went to Sudlersville, Churchill the week before in Sudlersville, and I'm just kinda amazed at how many calls these folks are doing. They're in the hundreds in these small communities. And like Queenstown and Kent Island, half of them are motor vehicle accidents on the main highways. And their dedication is incredible. I, I didn't know anybody there, really. I, I met President Chad and Chief Kurt, Kurt, excuse me, and I sat at a table with folks I didn't know, and we're, we're kinda lollygagging, and this one guy, he's also a paramedic in Cecil County, and he walked in on a homicide. Or, excuse me, not a homicide, but a suicide, where the woman took her own life with a, with a gun. And this is just a young kid, you know, this guy, this, the, the paramedic is like twenty-three years old. And he's gotta see this stuff, you know, so it's, it's really quite moving. The second thing is, is this an appropriate time to talk about?
Whatever you want. This is, this is whatever you wanna talk about, son.
About Brook Lane?
If you wanna talk about, yeah, you can, if you'd like.
So as you know, Commissioner Moran has been very fervent about the Drug Coalition and our kids and our adolescents and suicide prevention and all these things. And Chris and I talked at Mako, and it was pretty much the same thing, meaning we all were on the same page, and I know you guys are, too. So Jim and I spoke at, two weeks ago, about, you know, we can probably find some land. We probably can find a building or make something of it. Our big issue is how can we find someone to manage a facility where kids can go to that are in crisis situations, whether it's suicidal ideations or whatever, anything that you can think of, before they get to the Witsit Center, right? We wanna capture them before they get into the drugs and the alcohol and the violence. And honestly, we have nothing on the shore that anyone's said that we have that can immediately help these kids in these crisis situations, other than Easton, the ER, and Chestertown in Annapolis. So long story short, Jim and I were talking, and we've reached out to a place called Brook Lane. And I know Jack's familiar with it, and I know Todd's familiar with it. And they are willing to talk with Jim and I and Chris and Ronnie Fithian and Jackie Gregory, who are Commissioners in the Upper Shore Regional Council. So we're setting up, I guess Todd's gonna have to do it, we're gonna set up a Zoom as an introduction so we can hear from their clinical experience what they need to manage a facility on the Eastern Shore. So lots to come, and it's under Jim's leadership, really, that this has kinda taken shape. So lot, a lot, a lot to do, and I think we need to go into this as what can we, Upper Shore, do for you, not what can you do for us? Because let's face it, you know, people have been trying for twenty, thirty years to get something from a behavioral health onto the shore, and nope, Shepherd Pratt doesn't really wanna come, you know, so let's just see where this goes. So appreciate your leadership on that.
Anything else you wanna talk?
That's plenty.
Is it? Okay.
That's plenty.
Big man?
Well, I was gonna do legislative stuff, but we're gonna wait till next week.
You're gonna wait till, uh, to, the clouds move away?
Eh, some juicy stuff. But I do wanna, in the firefighter vein, obviously condolences to the Olds family. But also, you know, we always, we cheer the firefighters, but I just want, this time, I wanna make a shout-out to all their families because their families sacrificed a great deal to be firefighters' families, knowing when they leave, are they coming back? You know what I mean? So, and we've had some line-of-duty deaths here in Queenstown County. It's been pretty tragic. So shout-out to all the families as well as the firefighters. And that's it.
It's Saturday. Lineup is at one for, I guess it's, and they've asked for one unit per fire department to show up, and I hope we can make it as a...
For Dave Olds?
Yeah, for the funeral, and the funeral starts at two, at the, at the firehouse.
Okay. Well, I mean, Phil served with Dave for four years. I served with him for just one year. But, you know, you didn't have to wait long to see what kind of person Dave Olds was. Dave will tell you what's on his mind, and believe me, he'll tell you everything that's on his mind. And he's not gonna tell you what you wanna hear. He'll tell you what was on his mind, so. And I always appreciated that about him, so he was, he's true grit, and it's a shame, and he will be missed. As far as Patrick, what you're talking about, yeah, we, you know, this is from the Drug Free Coalition, and Patrick, yours is more towards mental health, and mine was in the Drug Free Coalition, so it's a good combination because those are both hu- huge items, and really for the youth of this county. And the nice thing about it is, is working in unison with other counties, Kent County, Caroline County, possibly Talbot County, and treating a facility like we do, Chesapeake College. And, you know, you know, that's the model that, you know, we, we don't run Chesapeake College, but we pay into it, and they offer service to our citizens, and, and, you know, we just need to start somewhere. Just start, you know, researching what it's gonna take to have a facility that, you know, you don't want it for one county because there won't be enough work there. I hope there'll never be enough work there, but, you know, moving forward with that. So, you know, that, that is something that, you know, we're gonna have those conversations, and we'll see where it leads us.
I think it's gonna be, honestly, Jim, not to jump in on that, but I think it's gonna be, the collaboration, I think, is a good model for a lot of other things we should be doing regionally where we, as individual counties, take on by ourselves. And sometimes we don't have the means or methods to do it, but as a group, it seems like we can get a lot more done. And this is a perfect example of where that's gonna work, I think.
And I will say, right now in the county, you know, I've been following, we have a, an association, and I knew I'd forget the name of it, for the veterans, with Eric Johnson at the helm and Walt Petrie. And they are, they are making huge strides towards a, you know, helping county veterans and, and with their, anything from hospitals to, you know, their mortgage, to, you know, you name it, any issue that they have, and getting them, getting them help, and hats off to them. I've missed, unfortunately, like four meetings in a row because it seems like every time they set something up, I'm out of town or already committed. So, you know, I'd like to give them a big shout-out, and I wish them the best as they move forward with that. So I guess, you know, with that being said, I've had, I've had enough. Got a motion to adjourn?
Second.
There we go. Thank you very much.